The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient Woods Hole Terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638, or meganet.net.
...the Town of Falmouth Select Board meeting for Monday, June 30, 2025. It is our intention to go into executive session, and in that regard, I'm going to ask the executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel town manager. I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor by roll call?
Goldstone, aye.
Brown, aye.
Richardson, aye.
Mascali, aye. Okay, we will adjourn and be back at 6:30. Meeting, June 30. We have adjourned from executive session, so if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justiciable.
Thank you. Okay. Our first order of business is we have two proclamations, and I'm going to ask Member Richardson to read the first.
Thank you. So this is a proclamation for the Falmouth Commodores, whereas the Falmouth Commodores were founded in 1923 in the Cape Cod League, where there were only four teams. A hundred and two years later, the Cape Cod League is now known as the Pre-Are Collegiate Summer League with now 10 teams. And whereas the Falmouth Commodores' mission is to help young men and young women fulfill their dreams, and whereas the Falmouth Commodores are supported by numerous volunteers and local sponsorships to provide a showcase for our players and interns, the Commodores also run youth clinics, provide scholarships to Falmouth High School students, and provide outreach at community events. And whereas, the Falmouth Commodores have a new head field manager, Jared Salta Makia, previously an assistant coach with the Boron Braves and professionally with the Boston Red Sox. Jared replaces Jeff Trundy, a legendary and beloved field manager and a Cape Cod League Hall of Famer. And whereas, volunteers, field staff, and interns want to invite you to attend and watch the Falmouth Commodores at Gov. Fuller Field. Now, therefore, we, Robert P. Mascali, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Barrett Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson, members of the Falmouth Select Board, do hereby proclaim July 10, 2025, to be Falmouth Commodore Day in the Town of Falmouth, and urge all our citizens to observe this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. We have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this day, 30th day of June, 2025.[322.22][322.22](applause)
We're joined by the President of the Commodores, Robert Curtis. Do you want to come up and say a few words, or?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Select Board, for this honor and for this. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.[346.62][346.62](laughing) Okay, I usually don't have a problem with talking softly. Thank you very much for this honor and this notation and this proclamation. It is for July 10. We are having a public event at the St. Boniface Church on July 10 to introduce our new coaching staff for the Commodores. You may have seen some of the banners across town. That logo for the year is we're entering a new era, and we've got a lot of new people involved, a lot of new volunteers. We have over 80 volunteers that routinely provide their time to help play these games at Gov. Fuller Field. And so, we work with multiple community groups, 10, 12. Our players are off handing out strawberries at the strawberry festival, doing, and actually right now, they're working on the carousel, over at the Carousel of Light. So, yeah, I just drove by, this, almost done. But thank you, everybody, and I hope to see you at our event and certainly one of our games over at Gov. Fuller Field. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A great bunch of young men over there.[413.03][413.03](applause)
And we have a proclamation for the 300 Committee 40th Anniversary, and I'll ask Mr. Brown to read that proclamation.
And before I start that, I just want to say that I worked on the carousel with some of those young men, and what a classy bunch you've sent us. Those are really good kids, or young men, I should say. So, this is a proclamation respecting announcing the 40th Anniversary of the 300 Committee. Resolution of proclamation congratulating the 300 Committee on its 40th Anniversary. Whereas, the 300 Committee was formed in 1985 for the purpose of protecting 300 acres of public conservation land for the Town of Falmouth's 300th birthday. And whereas, the 300 Committee continued land protection efforts focused on preserving and protecting open space in all of Falmouth villages to ensure equitable distribution of high-quality, open space for purposes including drinking water protection, habitat preservation, farmland preservation, and passive recreational access. And whereas, the 300 Committee's ongoing partnership with the Town provides significant resources for supporting land stewardship, public outreach, and education for the appreciation and caretaking of Falmouth's valued open spaces. And whereas, the 300 Committee has worked with the Town and additional partners over the course of 40 years to protect more than 2,700 acres of land to support and sustain Falmouth's environmental health and quality of life. Therefore, be it resolved that the Falmouth Select Board joins the Massachusetts House and Senate in congratulating the 300 Committee on 40 years of land protection in the Town of Falmouth, and witness whereof we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed. Robert P. Mascali, Chair; Heather H. M. H. Goldstone, Vice Chair; Douglas C. Brown; Colin W. Reed; and Jack P. Richardson, Select Board.[531.38][531.38](applause)
Thank you, and I think we have Joanne and Jessica. Do you want to come up and say a few words about the 300 Committee? And Leonard Johnson as well? And, oh, here's the whole group.
It might be best at the podium, because I think the FCTV camera is probably over there.
Is this mic working?
Do they? Okay.
Yes. Is this better?
That works.
It works. Both work, I think.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Select Board. I'm Joanne Muramato, the President of the 300 Committee Land Trust. With me tonight are Jessica Rittenhour, our Executive Director, and members of our Board of Directors, not all here, but most of them. So, it takes a team to get things done. And so, our 300 Committee team includes our staff, our Board of Directors, our committees, our volunteers, members and supporters, and our partner, the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. So, on behalf of our 300 Committee team, we greatly appreciate this proclamation. Since our inception in 1985, we have always worked very closely with the Town of Falmouth to preserve open space, and that collaboration has been extremely fruitful. So, we look forward to future collaboration to preserve open space, and we look forward to the proclamation being read at our annual meeting on July 10. And thank you again. We really, truly appreciate this proclamation.
We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.[653.54][653.54](applause)
All right, well, just, sure, go ahead.
I just want to say also, we didn't mention it in the proclamation, but I really appreciate your new efforts to incorporate some affordable housing on the periphery of your projects. That's a great new program, and I really appreciate that. Absolutely.
Just hearing the tingling of the cellphone reminds me that I neglected to say, please silence your cellphone and notify the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Is there anyone recording? No. Okay, very good. We will proceed now to recognition. Anyone on the board have some recognition? Ms. Brown?
I recognize the Carousel of Light volunteers pulling together the effort to put the carousel up without any experienced leadership. The board members themselves found volunteers and the guys from the Commodores Club, and I went over and helped. I mean, they had a crew for years that was doing it, and for some reason, the crew was not available and not responsive this year, and they still pulled it together. And it's all, like you said, it's almost done, so, good for them.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recognize the members of the Juneteenth Celebration Organizing Committee for putting together a really wonderful celebration. I think over 300 people attended multiple hours of great programming, both some really valuable history and some awesome music and fun.
Thank you. It was a great event. I'd just like to recognize Woods Hole resident Catherine Bumpus. Last week was recognized as a Commonwealth heroine for the class of 2025, and she was honored with others at the State House. So, congratulations to Catherine. Many of us know the hard work she does in Woods Hole and the town in general, so thank you, Catherine. Announcements?
Just one more recognition. One more thing the 300 Committee did this week was opening the Little Pond Conservation Area, so thank you again.
And my announcement is tomorrow, 10 o'clock, Hatchville Fire Station will be opening, so you're all welcome to come. It's a milestone in the town, and looking forward to having it up and running, so thank you. Yes?
This weekend, July 3 through 7, Friends of Falmouth Public Library Book Sale. Not that you could miss it on the lawn, but make sure you get there early.
Okay. All right, we will then proceed to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in the discussion of the topic. Is there anyone here to speak to public comment? No. Okay. Excuse me, ma'am, and are you from the Enterprise here? Okay, so, you know, I had spoken to Devin, and I understand that he is moving on, and I just wanted to, on behalf of the Select Board, thank him for the, you know, for the good work that he's done the past couple of years. His reporting has been spot-on, so please wish him our best wherever he ends up, so thank you. And I also want to mention that Member Reed is excused. He's actually, I think if you look at here, he's in Venice, so, so he had, he has a justifiable excuse for not being here this evening. So, as you will notice, or people who regularly attend, you will notice that we have changed the consent agenda, which was usually at the end of the, at the end of the program agenda. You know, most of those go through without too much discussion or controversy, but every once in a while, something comes up and people ask, well, do I have to come? Is it important for us to come? And usually, we're getting to those matters at, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock, and the end, and we run through the consent agenda. So, we have decided amongst ourselves to move it up so that it's a little bit more convenient for people. They can get here. If there is an issue, they can, you know, address it, or if not, they can just understand and head home. So, I'm going to read out the consent agenda, and if any members want to hold a particular matter, please indicate to the Chair. The first administrative order, consider a vote to approve a project agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Long Pond Watershed Protection Project under the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant Program. Number two, consider a vote to accept a donation in the amount of $500 from David's Old Silver Swim, Inc., care of Robert and Susan Catalano, to the Beach Donations Account, 28-63-5655-4830, to fund the Dr. David Garber, quote, "Dare to be great," unquote, award given to a lifeguard during the annual banquet. Number three, consider a vote to accept a water main easement from Woods Hole Partners, LLC, for the benefit of property at 533 Woods Hole Road. Number four, consider a vote to consent to a grant of a gas easement from Woods Hole Partners, LLC to Boston Gas Company for the benefit of 533 Woods Hole Road. Number five, consider a vote to appoint the certified weighers for the Cape Cod aggregates. Number six, consider a vote to reappoint the executive members of the task force for workers and families to serve the remaining year of the task force's charge. Number seven, discuss and consider approval of the Freshwater Pond Advisory Committee's request to expand the committee membership to nine full members. Number eight, consider a request from the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution for a variance to sign code Section 184-30 movable, portable, or mobile signs for a temporary promotional building wall sign in excess of eight square feet on the Smith Laboratory Hyde Bay Wall. And number nine, consider the approval of a letter of support to the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for an affordable house, affordable housing grant application for the 545 Main Street project.
Hold.
So, we will entertain a motion for numbers one through eight with respect to the consent agenda?
I would move approval of orders number one through eight on the consent agenda with one comment, that I would say I'd like to mention thankful appreciation for securing a $158,000 grant to contribute to that, purchase that property on the town's watershed, so it's good work. Thank you.
Okay. Second, so we have a motion and a second with respect to items one through eight on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. With respect to number nine, Member Goldstone, would you like to speak on that issue?
Yes, so just two things. There were a couple of copy edits, typographic changes that I can share with the Town Manager's office after the meeting. I apologize that I wasn't able to get those over to you today. And beyond that, I guess, and I know that we have Mr. Galasso here, I would love to see that letter. It expresses, I would say, overall support for the project. Would love to be able to add in a little bit more detail about the importance of this funding specifically to the project, and didn't know if Mr. Galasso would want to speak to that, to be able to strengthen that letter a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm sure he would. I think we are under somewhat of a time constraint with respect to this particular application, and we did make efforts to get this on the agenda at the last minute, but certainly happy to hear from Mr. Galasso.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank Town Manager for putting this item on the agenda so quickly. Really appreciate it. We heard about this grant application just a week ago, and we've been scrambling to get everything together, get it submitted on time. So, this is one part of a almost $30 million project now, and altogether, this project will probably require around eight different sources of funding. Some of them, unfortunately, we lost when some funding was clawed back by the current administration in Washington, and so we're sort of doing double work and trying to find different applications for it that will help serve the building. We've applied for funding to make the building more energy efficient. We hope to hear about that grant application the next few days. So, this is just another piece of the overall picture of financing the project, the $30 million.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I guess I would, I would be happy to move approval of the letter with some copy edits to be provided, and perhaps at the discretion of the Town Manager and the Chair, some additional language to strengthen the importance specifically of this funding in light of the loss of federal funds in particular.
The only caution is that we need to get this out pretty quickly.
Absolutely.
That's all, but thank you.
I don't want to hold that up.
Yep, thank you. I had a couple of edits that I already shared with Mr. Renshaw, so thank you.
So, would move approval of the letter with additions at the discretion of Town Manager and the Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Those were all positive comments.
Yes. Hearing no further discussion. A vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to committee interviews. We are going to interview and consider a vote to appoint a committee member on a regulatory board, in this case, the Board of Health. And we have George Hofelder here, I believe, Mr. Doctor, if you will.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is there anything that you would like to add to what's in your application and what people know about you in this town and all the good work that you do?
Well, I've been a county health officer for over 40 years, and I figured, in my own town, I would speak to what I know, and Title V is what I know, and Boards of Health deal with that for 90% of the time, but we have some real tough decisions coming up with all the wastewater planning that's going on, and I'd say the Select Board, as well as the Board of Health, as we guide the town through this, are probably going to get some cuts and bruises on it simply because it's new, it's expensive, and everybody will bear the cost. I think the other George gave you a sort of the spiel that we really need to start to think about supporting those people who will never be on sewer, but will pay for the sewer, and they'll be expected to do something more for their nutrient reduction, which means IA systems, which, as you know, are quite expensive. So, as we go forward, I think the Board is going to be challenged with that particular aspect of things because it's going to hit just about everybody in the pocket.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, we will now move on to Mr. Hofelder's experience. I would nominate him for a term through June 30, 2028, to the Board of Health.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
The next two interviews are to interview and consider a vote to appoint committee members, the first being the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Pamela Rothstein. Good evening, Ms. Rothstein.
Good evening.
So, welcome, and just, is there anything that you would like to tell us about your interest in the committee and something that's, you know, in addition to what you've submitted up to here? We're happy to hear from you.
Sure. I served on the committee when it was the Bicycle Committee, and moved into being the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee for nine years, at which point I had to stop. Found myself continuing to think of these issues. You know, looking at that picture of Venice, it's very clear how you have to move through Venice, right? Well, I'm a believer that everybody should be able to move around where they live safely, and to have the means to do that. I've lived in Falmouth for over 30 years, and I think there's a lot of potential for us to improve that record, and it was really gratifying to work on the committee towards that, whether that's use of the bike path in recreational biking or commuting, the people who, improving the east-west links in town in particular to enable people to move safely, potentially creating more paths, but really making our streets safer for pedestrians. Unfortunately, the past few years have seen an increase of, you know, very, very serious accidents. So, you know, we have a wonderful Chair now, there's a wonderful Chair now, we have a long history of working with Town Departments, DPW. I find that that is really critical work in a room filled with really big issues on tonight's agenda. I'm a believer in acting locally and making our daily life safe and to enable people to make the choices they want to make safely about transportation, and that takes work. That's it.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Rothstein?
No, just happy to have you back on this committee. Thank you.
All right, is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
I make a motion to appoint Pamela Rothstein to a term on the Bicycle Pedestrians Committee ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, and good luck. Okay, the next is the Council on Aging. We have Joseph M. Clancy. Mr. Clancy, if you'd like to step up and tell us a little bit about yourself. I will say that I have had the pleasure of being the Select Board liaison to the Council on Aging. I've seen Mr. Clancy in action, and he is certainly a wonderful candidate, but I'll let him tell you more about himself, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a pleasure serving with you as well, members of the Board, executive staff. I'm Joe Clancy. I've lived in Falmouth since 1976 as a full-time, permanent resident. I'm still an active real estate appraiser and continue to work every day, but I enjoy coming to this building. I've served three concurrent terms on the Council on Aging, and my term limit ended last June 30. So, I've been off for a year, but I've attended some of the Board's meetings and have stayed active. Some of the things that we were able to accomplish was to update our handbook, and more importantly, select three, excuse me, two people to our wall of recognition the first time ever. Last fall, we were able to have a wonderful reception here where that wall of recognition was made public, and we've enjoyed that. So, if you will have me, I would love to serve on the Board again. We have a wonderful staff in Jill Irving Bishop, who is amazing to work with, and the people that she directs on a daily basis are just very pleasant and welcoming, so I welcome the chance to be back.
Thank you. Any questions?
None.
Anyone have a motion?
No.
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint Joe Clancy to the Council on Aging for a term ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and just in following that, I had meant to say at the beginning of the meeting that I thank Jill Bishop and the whole staff here for making this facility available to us this evening for this, for these hearings and discussions that we have this evening, so, thank you.
Well said, well said, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to go into public hearings, and I'm going to ask Member Goldstone, Vice Chairman Goldstone, to list the first public hearing.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, June 30, 2025, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room. Says Falmouth Town Hall, but we are here in the senior center. On the application of Thomas and Mary Ann Verillo for permission to construct an elevated walkway, ramp, and float system located at 43 South U Way, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Area affected is Flax Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this application at the Office of the Select Board, per order of the Falmouth Select Board.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, or someone on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I didn't see you over there. How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
I saw the presentation, but I didn't see you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, for the record, Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering. I represent-
I represent the applicant, Thomas and Mary Ann Verillo. They own a property at number forty-three South View Way, and they have the benefit of waterfrontage on Flax Pond, which is a freshwater pond in East Falmouth, and they've applied to you for a special permit to install a recreational walkway, ramp, and float. The purpose of the structure is for passive recreation on Flax Pond, including canoeing, kayaking, fishing, and swimming. There is an existing path from the house down to the pond. There'll be a small wooden landing at the water's edge. A ramp will connect to that, and then there's an eight-by-twelve float. So that's a total of ninety-six square feet, where they will have the ability to launch kayaks, canoes, and swim off of and fish. You've reviewed other similar projects on Flax Pond like this. We have been before the Conservation Commission and received a favorable decision from the Conservation Commission that was reviewed for environmental performance standards, and we think this is something that you can approve, and I am happy to take questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Borselli? Vice Chair Goldstone?
You mentioned that other projects like this on Flax Pond have been before this board. How many, do you know roughly how many floats or docks like this there are in the pond?
In the last two to three years, my office has submitted applications, I think, three to four that were reviewed by both the Conservation Commission and this board and approved.
And obviously, the notice went out to Abutters. Was there any feedback received from Abutters regarding this project?
We received no feedback or questions from any of others.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Brown?
I don't have any questions. I can read the plans. It seems pretty simple, so.
Okay. Okay, well, does anyone in the audience have any comments with respect to this particular application? Okay, seeing none, we will have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Okay. Any further discussion amongst the members? Here to be or satisfied, Ms. Goldstone? Okay. Someone want to make a motion? Or have the motion in front of them?
I move approval of the dock application for, is there a reason?
Yes, motion to approve the application of Thomas and Mary Ann Verillo for permission to construct an elevated walkway, ramp, and float system located at forty-three South View Way, East Falmouth, in the waters of Flax Pond.
Okay, that's a motion.
One second.
And that's second by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Our next hearing is discuss, discuss and consider the application by Falmouth Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, LLC, DBA Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, located at eighty-seven Scranton Avenue, for a pool table license to install two pool tables in the outdoor seating area, approved on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Renshaw, do you have anything with respect to that?
Just a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me ask Vice Chair Goldstone to read the announcement.
Absolutely. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one forty, Sections one seventy-seven, one seventy-eight, one seventy-nine, one eighty, one eighty-three A of the general laws, subject to Sections two oh two and two oh five thereto, that Falmouth Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, LLC, DBA Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, located at eighty-eight Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts, has applied for a pool table license. A hearing on the above application will be held on Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at six forty-five PM. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmath.gov, per order of the Select Board.
Thank you. Mr. Renshaw, do you have some comments with respect to this matter?
Thank you, yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. I just wanted to point out that in your package this evening is a copy of the site plan that shows the location, the proposed location of the two pool tables in the outdoor area, as the chair indicated. Are proposed to be located in the outdoor area adjacent to the food truck, as shown, illustrated in the site plan. And also, Mr. Chair and Select Board wanted to point out that the application has been reviewed by the police, fire rescue department, and the building departments, and no objections or concerns were cited.
Okay. Is anyone here on behalf of the applicant with respect to this matter? What's the board's pleasure? Do you want to proceed or? No. I had a couple of questions I would have liked to have asked, so in the absence of the applicant, I'd like to hold it over.
Okay.
I also had some questions and would like to, the chance to speak with the applicant.
Okay, so then we will have a, I don't know, do we need a formal motion to hold this over, Mr. Johnsonsaw?
Table it to a date.
Table to the next meeting?
Date certain.
A date certain. Let's table it to our next meeting, which is?
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. And?
Table it.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yep. Is there a motion to table?
I move that we table it to July fourteenth.
Okay. I think we may have the applicant here, so we haven't voted yet, so to close the hearing. So we were waiting, we had a couple of questions, so please introduce yourself.
We need to vote to reopen?
We don't think, we never closed it, so I think we're okay right now, so.
I true apologize for the delay. Con McLaughlin, General Manager, Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse. The applications for two pool tables, that they were already called for on the plan that we had submitted that was approved a couple of weeks ago, and it's known by the fire department and the building commissioner and everyone else.
Could you lift that mic a little bit?
I'm sorry. It's already been, I apologize. It's already been removed. It's already been on the plan since the last one approved. It's known by the building commissioner, fire chief, and everyone who signed off on that plan.
So my question is, you know, those pool tables attract a lot of people and a lot of interest and a lot of gathering, and I'm just wondering what efforts you're going to take to make sure that, you know, everyone there is acting appropriately, there's no gambling going on, and things like that.
Of course. Well, they're located, they're going to be, they're actually outdoor pool tables, which is excellent, it's the only ones we know of in town. They're near the entrance, which is the most secure area that always has security and things present in that area. Again, they were called for as far as square footage and location for aggression points and things like that on the plan, so there's proper widths and dimensions around them to make sure that crowds are safe moving around them. And they've also, I was only told recently about this application process, so unbeknownst to me, they, you know, they've been there for a little while. So we're confident in their security and their safety.
Okay. Vice Chair Goldstone?
I guess my question is perhaps duly for town manager and for the applicant, because when we approved the outdoor seating plan, one of the conditions of that was that it was to be an outdoor seating area and that the standing room be confined to the interior area designated for standing capacity. But in my experience, there's no way you have pool tables without people standing around the pool tables. And so I guess is that, Mr. Manager, is that a concern for you, given the constraint, you know, the constraints that were asked for around the standing room? And if so, is there a way to address that?
In my opinion, I had set up that, it was my intention with that seventy-two people to be, you can't really ask people to stand in one square box, invisible box, for this to be the standing room. We had allowed ourselves rooms so there was not four hundred and seventy-six seats in the restaurant, because also that includes waitstaff, bartenders, security, other things like that, that are going to be free-flow and motioning. So there's, the whole point of that was, what do we do about a line in the bathroom? Is that a standing room area? There's going to be five people in line in the bathroom? I mean, it's not really a standard that can be held by anybody. I think that the goal is to keep the number of people always under four seventy-six, to only have four hundred seated, so that that leaves room for people to go to the bathroom, play a game of pool, stand behind somebody at a bar and say hello, and not be in a violation. You know, that's not, that doesn't necessarily make sense for aggression, safety, all the things that we're concerned about.
I mean, I will caution you, I think, you know, there have been instances in the past, and that kind of activity can generate some activity.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure that you'll be cognizant of that, have your security staff being very aware of what's going on there at all times, because it can be a dangerous situation.
Thank you.
Especially when people drink.
And what I do think is, not to get into a bigger discussion, you have a lot to cover here, but it is, it seems to be that it was, it seems to be an older law, I mean, rule, because you can tell, because it's only bowling alleys and pool tables. It's like, oh, if it was foosball tables, it's fine. Cornholes, fine. Ping pong's fine. Like, all right, well, then this is like from gangsters in the seventies, whatever, whatever caused this rule. I had to show, I had to show LLC paperwork of who owns the property and who owns the company and who's in the background. It's a bit of an outdated.
I do have comments, and I would agree with the applicant in terms of a dated requirement that the applicant receive a pool table license. However, I did talk to, in response to the vice chair's question, I did talk to the police department rep, and there is concern, but I'm confident, as the applicant stated, that they've been in operation for a little bit of time now, and I've been told you've been doing a good job keeping the traffic flow moving and circulating, not having a lot of people congregating around the tables as the players. So that's the concern that I have, is just, you know, having a lot of people jamming up that area. But as long as, as security, you mentioned that the security is right in that immediate area.
They're directly next to the tables.
I think we're fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application, pro or con?
The only thing I'd like to add is like, I share your concern, you know, we're in the middle of a housing crisis, a, we have a big consequential thing with our, with our energy policy, and we're talking about two pool tables, so, which I know that's the law, and this is perhaps a state issue, but I find it a little ridiculous that we have to spend time on items like this one. But I thank you for your due diligence and for coming here today as well, with that in mind.
I don't mean to, but to take it the other way, maybe include foosball tables and ping pong and make sure the town's getting the revenue from any entertainment source that's happened, and that it's done safely, not just limited to pool tables and bowling alleys.
All right. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion with respect to the application among the board members? Seeing none? All in favor, oh, a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the application by Falmouth Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, LLC, for a DBA Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse, thank you, for a pool table license to install two pool tables in the outdoor seating area, approved by the Select Board on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. See, I'll ask Vice Chair Goldstone to read the public announcement.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-three A of the general laws, as amended by Chapter two ninety-nine of the Acts of nineteen twenty-six and amendments thereto, that Falmouth Oriental Incorporated, DBA Asia Restaurant, located at four fifty-two Main Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts, has applied for an entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license. A hearing on the above application will be held on Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at six forty-five PM. Comments may be sent to the Select Board at selectboard@falmouthmath.gov, per order of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Renshaw, do you have anything to add to this?
Just two quick comments before we turn it over, Mr. Chair. The application is for recorded music, per the information in your packet, and television, I understand, in the dining room area. And the application has been reviewed by the police department and fire rescue department, and no objections were concerned.
Seems pretty benign. Thank you for being here this evening. Do you have anything to add to what has been said?
No, we're here for the entertainer license. That's all. We already passed a particular license.
Yep, yep, you've been here before. Go ahead to here, see you here again. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application, pro or con? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just, is there any further discussion amongst the board members with respect to this application?
I believe the hours are eleven AM till ten PM.
Eleven thirty to ten PM.
Eleven thirty, okay.
Okay, with that understanding, anyone want to make a motion?
I move approval of the entertainment license. I have to scroll all the way back to the beginning to get the motion.
I'll take it from you.
We are a collaborative board here. We want people to understand that.
I recommend the Select Board approve the application by, or I remember, Falmouth Oriental, Inc., DBA Asia Restaurant, for fifty-two Main Street, Falmouth, for an annual entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval, and you've heard the discussion. Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. We're anxiously awaiting you opening for business. Love the place in Mashpee.
Soft opening is coming Wednesday.
Oh, good, wonderful.
Do you write, do you write there?
Great, thank you.
When's the regular opening? Next day?
When the legal license come out.
All right.
Yeah, we just only open, soft opening for four, but until, until the legal license, we see.
Okay, good luck.
We'll see you then. Thank you. Okay, we will now proceed to business items. A, update on the Level Two Significant Drought designation. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our outstanding water superintendent, Mr. Matt Landon, has a brief presentation, but while Matt's getting ready, I'll just note that the Town of Falmouth, along with the entire Cape region, continues to be identified as being in a Level Two Significant Drought. I believe the latest report here is June ninth of this year. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection requires permitted water systems complying with several restrictions, those being all non-essential outdoor water usage of boiling man, except for the watering of ornamentals and flower gardens, drip irrigation, handheld hoses, watering cans may be permitted. Matt, be ready to get to the subject matter.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Select Board and those in attendance tonight, Matthew Landon, Falmouth Water. So just a little background, the drought management plan in the Commonwealth was updated in December of twenty twenty-three. Each month, the drought management task force team meet to evaluate the current drought conditions in the state. The team is comprised of various departments within the Commonwealth, including Energy Environmental Affairs, Mass DEP, Mass Water Works, and Public Water Systems. The team then gathers data from various user groups about the current and past rain data in each region, which we have six in the state of Massachusetts. They also take in data for current drought downs on existing wells, ponds and lake elevations, and listen to any issues that a public water system may have to provide enough water to a community. At this point, the task force then evaluate all variables and categorize each region into a drought status. Currently, as we all know, the Cape region is in a Level Two Significant Drought, based on all the variables we've seen thus far in May and June. You will notice that the Islands region, which is part of the Cape and Islands region, is not classified as a Level Two, but as a Level One, because they had more rain in the month of, end of May. Within the restriction levels, because we are in a level two drought, there are a bunch of action categories that we try to follow and adhere to, to improve the conditions of our current water system. When they sit down each month, the drought task force goes through a bunch of categories. They take the data from all the different organizations within the state, they coordinate, they communicate with public outreach, you know, how much water was received in each they communicate with public outreach, you know, how much water was received in each community from rain, you know, if there were any major catastrophic fires, and based on the detection of how much water has been withdrawn on each community, they, they gather this and decide on which level you'll be in for a drought. The, the graph up here shows from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five on our, our primary reservoir, which is about sixty percent of our water supply to the community of Falmouth. As you can see in May of twenty twenty, we're just over nine feet, and then it slowly dropped down to just about eight and a half feet come the end of the month, versus this year in May of twenty twenty-five. We started only at about just over six feet, jumped up a little bit towards the end when we had a flash flood, but we were still significantly lower at the end of May compared to a five-year outlook. Sam with Long Pond Reservoir in June, you can see that on the first in twenty twenty, we're at about eight and three-quarters feet high and drew down to by the thirtieth, about, you know, seven point seven-five feet, versus starting off in June at our reservoir, we're at just under six point five feet and dropped down to just over six feet. So historically, for a breakdown from May twenty twenty to May twenty twenty-five, we started off at nine point two-two feet. On May first in twenty twenty twenty-five, we're at six point one five, six point one five feet with the difference of three point zero seven feet, which equates to about thirty-six point eight-four inches. This is also due that we had very little snow in the winter of twenty-four and twenty-five. As you can see, with June twenty twenty and June twenty twenty-five, we started off at eight point six-one feet in twenty twenty and six point four-one feet in twenty twenty-five, with the difference of two point two feet or twenty-six point four-zero inches. Feet are also measured in North American Vertical Datum of nineteen eighty-eight. It's the long pond level measurement is correlated at feet above sea level, which is an equation that we use to, to gather this data. So Falmouth, moving forward for the future restrictions, the drought task force team meets again on July ninth, twenty twenty-five, at ten A M. Upon the drought management task force recommendation, Falmouth Public Water System ID four oh nine six thousand, will continue to enforce any recommended, recommended water restrictions via the Falmouth M A homepage with the newsflash, utilizing our rave alert system to let the residents know that where we stand on our level, and also utilizing the enterprise. Some additional water conservation tips that we're trying to get out there are, you know, fix your leaking toilets, fix your plumbing and your irrigation systems. If you can afford to, upgrade your toilets, dishwashers, washing machines to be more efficient, that would, that would help us all. Utilize rain barrels, if possible, for hand watering gardens. Cut your lawn at a high deck to prevent grass from burning. Try to plant your new lawn in the fall when root structures will form more effective for the spring, and utilize hand nozzles on garden hoses. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Lannan.
Yes.
Have we learned of many instances of noncompliance with our, our restrictions? Have there been complaints about people watering their lawn or excessively and so?
A, a lot of people have been calling in and we've been making work orders, and what we do then is we put a door hanger on the home that was using irrigation. If that continues and we hear another violation, they'll be getting a fee.
But there are exceptions for new, new.
There are, yeah. New lawn watering, you can hide your seat, but it has to be a full new lawn. It cannot, there's a bunch of different uses that are not restricted. For instance, all of our baseball fields and our youth fields, those, those are allowed to have water, because they're not on the restriction list. However, if you, or if you had an actual vegetable garden, you can hand water your garden. But if you only had a four-by-four spot on your lawn, you're saying, oh, I need two zones to, to wash, to, to water my lawn. No, that's not acceptable.
Thanks for answering the question about the, the field. I was there yesterday, and the field's absolutely beautiful.
It is. Jeremiah does a great job of it.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Goldstone?
Yes.
Understanding that it can take a long time to, to get out of drought, I've, I've heard a lot of people in the past couple of months say, it has done nothing but rain since March. How can we still be in drought? So my question is, is there any way to estimate how much rain we would need to get out of drought conditions at this point?
So down here, it's, it's a little more tricky, because you have the, you're on a peninsula, so when you think of rain, it's not just going to go all to Long Pond, it's going to hit Long Pond and then disperse out into the ocean. So it's a little more complicated to figure out how, how much rain we're actually going to need, and then you have other variables like the wind, wind just causes evaporation. If it's very dry, it washes off into the catch basins, and then it takes longer for it to leach back into groundwater. So I don't, I don't know, it's not looking too promising to, to get out of this level right now, but it looks like the long-range forecast, there is some rain, but for right now, we need to follow state guidance and conserve our water the best we can.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Lannan, we had an email recently from a local landscaper who said that we're missing an opportunity with the outfall, and we should be repurposing some of this non-potable water, maybe send it to golf courses or ball fields. I know that would be a huge infrastructure expense, but I wonder if it's something that's on your radar at all?
As far as I know, most of the golf courses in Falmouth have their own wells, and I cannot restrict them right now in our current level to not water because of, of their use. If they don't have current irrigation there, I can't imagine there being a golf course there, so.
I was thinking more about like town facilities, like the ball fields and stuff you just mentioned.
Yes, I mean, for instance, Fuller Field over here is on its own well, so it's not on, it's on town water. I don't know how many other facilities in town require, or, or on town water off the top of my head, but it's definitely something we could consider in the future. I just don't know how that would work with contamination and taking non-potable water to turn it to be safe enough to readminister into the ground, versus having actual potable water, because you have to think if a kid, if one of those irrigation heads pops up and their head, you know, they put their mouth over, I know there's all sorts of crazy stuff that could happen, but we'll definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Ms. Lowell, did you want to add something? It looked like you had something to say there when Mr. Lannan was saying.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments of Mr. Lannan or with respect to the, the drought situation we find ourselves in? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Our next matter is consider a request from the Two-Fiftieth Anniversary Task Force for a variance design code, section one eighty-four dash seven placement and one eighty-four dash thirty-two off premises signs to hang fourteen banners on poles on Main Street. Mr. Johnson, stop. Do you have anything to say? Or Mr. Mr. Renshaw?
Do you have a couple of comments, just to get started, I believe, of the applicant? Karen is in the back, she may be able to answer any specific questions. Mr. Chairman, select board, twelve of the banners contain quotes related to the American Revolution, and two contain information on the Falmouth Historical Society's new exhibition on the American Revolution in Falmouth, which is free and open to the public. And also, the task force is requesting placement of the banners from tomorrow, July first to September first. And, Mr. Chairman, if approved, I've spoken with the DPW director, if approved, the DPW would install these fourteen banners.
Okay. Ms. Ronaldo, would you like to tell us a little bit about this, or does the application speak for itself?
Thank you, Chair of the Scully. I believe that the presentation speaks for itself. I'm a member of the Two-Fifty Committee. I'm here on behalf of the Two-Fifty Committee requesting the display of these fourteen banners on Main Street. We've selected six quotes that we think are appropriate, timely, and interesting, and historically accurate. I think the town will enjoy that.
Okay. Any questions from any of you?
Can we vote on this? What is your vote, Brandon? Vote on this?
Yeah. To approve the variance.
Yes, yeah.
There's a sloping kid going across the bay.
As the select board lays us on to this, this committee, I can tell you that the members of the committee struggled very, very mightily with respect to finding appropriate comments and, and statements for, for the banners, and I think they certainly reflect the history of this, of this town and the importance that it had in the American Revolution.
Thank you. I agree.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter at this time? Okay, then I will entertain a, a vote with respect to the variance.
I will make a motion to approve the request from the Two-Fiftieth Anniversary Task Force for variance to sign code one eight four dash seven placement and one eight four dash thirty-two off premises signs to hang fourteen banners on poles on Main Street for a period of July one, twenty twenty-five to September one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now proceed to discussion of sewer betterment policy and grinder pump approach. And I'll ask Ms. Lowell to, to step up, but I will say that we are obviously aware that there are many people in the audience that are interested in this, in this matter, and rightly so. As you will hear during Ms. Lowell's presentation, there will be an appropriate forum for people to ask questions and get further information. So after Ms. Lowell's presentation, I will allow some public comment, but I would prefer that we limit it to a couple of minutes, and if you want to submit written information to the select board, I urge you to do that as soon as possible, because this is something we want to move on pretty quickly, and Mr. Renshaw has given us a pretty tight timeframe, so, you know, we won't have, have too much public comment. Mr. Renshaw, do you want to tee us up here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Amy is getting ready. Chairman just indicated we do have, this is kind of the first review, we wanted to get this information from the select board to begin the process. There is going to be a pretty robust public comment period, public dialogue, community forum that we're going to schedule. I don't think we've selected a date yet, but Amy, you may have more information on that. But, Mr. Chairman indicated, this is the first review, and there's going to be plenty of opportunity for more comment from the public.
And we want that comment, believe, because we want to hear people's, people's thoughts. So, Ms. Lowell.
Hi, I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent, and I passed out the, the presentation to the board because of the, the arrangement in here. The, the goal today is to provide background and recommendations on sewer betterment policy, number one, initiate discussion on a grinder pump approach for the next project. The select board is not being asked to vote on either of these items this evening. The focus to this evening is on the Great Pond Phase One project, but this, of course, could apply to, excuse me, to future projects. Just over, just reviewing, the, the Great Pond Phase One Sewer Project will sewer the area outlined in black there, and we're expanding the sewer system to the east. There will be a lift station at the north end of the town-owned parcel on Brick Hill, between Brick Hill and twenty-eight, and the wastewater will be pumped up using dual force mains up to the existing main treatment facility. The project is moving forward, based on the town meeting vote and the May vote as well. There is, there has been a, a relatively late design change, which was, is that there will be no lift station or gravity sewer in Falmouth Port. All of Falmouth Port will be served by grinder pumps, just like the rest of the properties on the T-Ticket Path Peninsula. This reduces the expected cost of the project by approximately two million dollars. This is zooming in on the sewer area, it's approximately six hundred parcels. Some properties will connect to sewer by gravity, most in the sewer area will connect by grinder pump. The project's schedule, as you mentioned, there will be a information meeting for property owners in July, and we will publish and notify folks, I think it'll be late July, and we'll let everybody know when that meeting is. We'll be bidding construction contracts, two of them, by the end of the summer, awarding contracts by the end of the fall, beginning construction before the end of twenty twenty-five, and ending construction, it's a two-year project, by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Sewer connections will be made, of course, after the project is complete, so not until after the end of twenty twenty-seven. To start with on the betterment, so, select board is going to need, need to consider three subjects. One is the betterment method, whether it's fixed uniform rate or uniform unit method. Two, what portions of the project are of specific benefit to the sewer area, and therefore, which costs will be included under the total cost for betterment, and which will be split seventy-thirty, therefore, as, as voted by the April twenty twenty-five town meeting, and then which remaining cost will be paid entirely by the town. And the last thing is how sewer equivalent units will be assigned to non-single-family residential properties. Betterment method options, as I mentioned, there are two. The first, fixed uniform rate, is based on rotten, lot frontage or lot area, or both. Uniform unit method is based on sewer equivalent units, or S E U's, and that's related to water use. I'm recommending that the, that we proceed with the uniform unit method, or S E U's. This is what we, what the town's employed on the previous sewer projects, and it better reflects the contribution of each property to the need for the sewer system, because it's tied to water use, which generally reflects the property's septic system discharge to groundwater. On the second topic, general versus special benefit facilities. General benefit facilities will not just benefit the sewer service area, but will also benefit the future sewer areas to come. So examples of the general benefit facilities are the Brick Hill Road Lift Station and the force mains from there to the treatment facility. The special benefit facilities really benefit specifically those in the sewer area, and those are the grinder pumps, which we'll be discussing later, and the sewer collection system, which includes the gravity sewer mains, the low-pressure mains, and the laterals. So that's, that's, I want to go then to, I think it wouldn't be satisfying just to talk about it in a general way, I got the feedback that we need to be specific for, in order for the selectmen to make an informed decision. So I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the estimated project cost at this time, and then how that gets translated using one, this set of assumptions. So this slide shows the cost applicable to the service area, and it's, and it's, you'll see that I've made a recommendation about how to do this, but there are other, other options that this board can, can come up with. So the first column there is the total project cost for each of the main project components. The first is what we're calling contract one, which is the lift station and the force mains to the wastewater plant. Contract two is the collection system, which is the, the pipes in the streets. Grinder pump procurement, then grinder pump subsidy, construction engineering services, police details, and fiscal and legal. The, the items with an asterisk are not, they're not applicable under the zero percent loan. The S R F program will not, will not fund those items, those three items with an asterisk. So those are not funded under the zero percent loan, and they would not receive a, the twenty-five percent loan forgiveness that's, that is available under the twenty-five percent loan commitment. So the second column breaks those costs down a little further to show what the total cost is with that twenty-five percent loan forgiveness. So those three items that don't get loan forgiveness are, you see that they're the same, same amount in the, in the two columns. That then, the next, the next column there, I'm, I'm making the, the first recommendation about what costs then are applicable to the service area, and therefore would be split seventy-thirty in accordance with that town meeting vote. So you can see the two, the four lines that are, that are darker, shaded darker in this table are costs potentially applicable to the service area. So I'd said before that the collection system is a special, is a special benefit facilities, or represents special benefit facilities, as does grinder pump procurement, and then construction engineering services and police details relate to both categories, both contracts, one and two, but also are split seventy-thirty under this arrangement. So I'd, I'd split this table that was in your memo into two pieces, so this is the second half of that table. The first column is the same, the, the second column is, is again transferred from, from the first table to show the costs that are applicable to the service area in that, according to that recommendation. Then, if we then employ the seventy, seventy percent to that first column, the amount that the, that would be covered under the betterment, or seventy percent of the amount in that first column, totals twenty-two million, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Then the remainder of the project cost would be paid for by the town as a whole, which is approximately twenty-four million dollars. So that is, that's how it breaks down if you apply the recommendation I was, or the initial recommendation I was making. So how does that, how does that translate to a betterment? So how does that, how does that translate to a betterment? If you, based on the numbers in the previous table, the betterment per sewer equivalent unit would be $27,000. That is determined by that estimated total cost that's going to be covered under the betterment and the number of sewer equivalent units. Betterments can be paid over 30 years at 0% interest, so that cost over 30 years, or annual cost over 30 years, would be $904 a year. This is an estimated maximum at this time because there's now almost 19% project contingency included in this, in this budget, and because the final number of SEUs is, is still not final, and we, I expect it to continue to go up as we get final feedback on, on the units in the sewer area. So now the third topic under betterments was sewer equivalent units and how those are assigned. Under the uniform unit method, one sewer equivalent unit is a single-family residence, so a home, a single-family home. Multifamily and commercial need to be assigned SEUs based on their residential equivalence. The recommend, and my recommendation is that we apply the sewer equivalent units for the Great Pond area in basically the same way we did for the Little Pond project, except when it comes to commercial properties. In the Little Pond project, one SEU was assigned for each commercial use, no matter the wastewater flow or water, wastewater flow slash water use, except for the two biggest properties in the Little Pond area, which were based on flows in DEP administrative consent orders. So my suggestion then is that commercial SEUs be based on average meter of water use over the past three years. One SEU would be, one SEU per 135 gallons per day. 135 gallons per day is the average water use for a single-family home in the Great Pond We'd have a minimum of one SEU per commercial unit or property, though if their, their water use average is less than 135, they'd still be charged one SEU. In my opinion, this is more appropriate than using Title V or peak flow for commercial use, because peak flow would, would generate some very high betterments for commercial properties in this area, or for any, any commercial property. So this is a table that summarizes what I just said, and I don't think I need to go through the whole thing, but, but as I'd said, a single-family residential home or a single-family residential condo unit would be one SEU. Multifamily units, up to four bedrooms, would be one SEU. Multifamily and apartment buildings would be .25 SEUs per bedroom, and those would be best based on the assessor's records for bedrooms. A motel would also be .25 SEUs per bedroom. All other commercial, as are, as I just described, one SEU per 135 gallons per day of water use. And vacant lots would have to be, will have to be assessed based on the current zoning and acreage of the property. Multi-use would, of course, be the sum of the SEUs according to the other, to the remainder of these classifications. So the final couple of betterment, or a couple of final betterment notes, there are many fewer commercial properties in the Great Pond Phase One Sewer Project area than they were in Little Pond Sewer area, and there are no very large commercial water users in this next sewer area. And in the future, after the betterment is assessed, the town sewer privilege fee can be applied for redevelopment, which would increase the water use after this betterment is voted. Next steps on the betterment is obviously to discuss the policy based on this outline and to vote the betterment policy at a future meeting. After the bids are open, which will be later this fall, we, the Select Board will vote an order of betterment assessment, which would include a betterment plan and list, and the maximum assessment per property. After the project is complete, which should be about fall, fall, winter of 2027, the Select Board will vote to finalize and certify the final SEU value, which, of course, cannot be higher than what was voted in the order. Grinder pump, moving on.
Let me just stop you there. Do you want to maybe take questions with respect to betterment? And then with grinder pump, I think that might be slow a little bit, or so, if anyone has any questions with respect to what Ms. Lowell has pointed out, you know, subject to what I said at the beginning, I would like to keep public comment to a couple of minutes. There'll be plenty of time for people to comment. Just if you have some question, any questions, please come up and identify yourself.
I have one that I'd like to ask.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
So Amy, it sounded like you were saying then the anticipated total cost to the homeowners is around the $27,000 range maximum?
Yes.
And could you remind me, in the Little Pond Sewer Project area, I think we were at like around 19, and it came in at 13.6? Not that that's a real indicator, but was it something like that?
The, the final betterment was in the $13,000 range, and yeah, the earlier assessment was something below 20,000.
Right.
So it did come, come down.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question, Ms. Goldsop?
I do, but I'm happy to. Ms. Lowell, you, you mentioned that the final number of SEOs, SEUs, is expected to increase. Is that as a result of looking at the commercial and larger bedroom count properties, or what accounts for that increase, expected increase?
So I've been meeting with the town assessor and looking at the properties in this area, and we are going to send out a, a letter very shortly to the multifamily properties in the area and ask for an inspection to verify that, you know, the assessor has done, that they don't, they don't, they may not have recent inspections for all of these properties. So there will be a, we'll request an inspection by the assessor's department of those. So yes, it's about multifamily and commercial, or multifamily and multi-use properties and verifying what's actually there.
All right. Okay, please identify yourselves.
Brian McDonald, 39 East Harbour Drive resident there. And I just had a couple of questions with regard to, there was no mention about the fact of connecting. Is that not considered part of the betterment? And there's, I know there's a lot of questions with people, like getting a plumber to get in and do all those things and where it goes on the property.
Yep.
Is there going to be a time for the residents to meet with people that say this is where it's going to come in and how they're going to connect to it and things like that? Because I know that's of concern, but you did a great job explaining the betterment on that side of it, but I think other people have questions about how do we connect and what does that mean to us?
Yep, thank you. I'll go ahead and answer that.
Yeah, please.
So you're right, I was focusing on the betterment, and the betterment is what the town charges the property owners in the service area as, as, how the town charges property owners in the service area a portion of the project cost. There is, there is an additional cost for each property owner in the service area, and that is the cost to connect their property to the sewer system. And that is not the subject of discussion tonight, but it's an important discussion. I will, I will say, so we are going to have a public meeting or a property owner information meeting, which will be public, of course, by the end of July, and we will talk more about that. But I will say again then that it is more than two years before anybody could connect to the sewer. So there will be additional meetings and, and much more information in the future about the connection process and about connection costs than we have, we will have available this, in July.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
I'm Eric Dunevich, 243 West Mall Highway. I was just wondering with determining the number of sewer equivalent units, is there thought to like additional housing and stuff? Because I think a big barrier to affordable housing in the town has been like every time an ADU gets approved, people have to remove a bedroom from their home and whatnot to meet the same, you know, nitrogen discharge for the septic systems. So I'm wondering like, is there forethought, or how's that being factored in to like the long-term planning for number of equivalent units?
I'm not sure I understand the question, I'm sorry.
Well, like, is the capacity, sorry, is the capacity being planned, like, is there thought towards like additional bedroom units in the future as people add ADUs, maybe duplex conversions or whatnot?
Right. So a couple of things. One is that the town's flow-neutral bylaw limits to a certain extent the redevelopment within, within sewer service areas anywhere in town. For, for single-family residential, the, the flow-neutral bylaw limits the number of bedrooms in the area, in, on a, on a single-family residential property to four. So you're grandfathered with whatever you have, and you can increase by right to four, but it's, you need a variance to go beyond that. And that's, that's the, the bylaw at the current time. As far as vacant lots, we are not trying to project the infinite realm of possibilities for what could happen on any vacant lot. We would apply the zoning as it is now and, and look at the acreage and come up with what would, what would normally be developed there. If further development is approved or is considered in the future, as I mentioned previously, the town does have a sewer privilege fee, which can be assessed to try to make up for a property, for example, paying a betterment, a smaller betterment now for what later is a larger impact on the system. You can't go back and change, you can't go back and change the betterment. You never can, you can't charge a second betterment on the property, but you can assess a sewer privilege fee for the increase in flow. But I think you're coming more from, are we planning to accommodate, are we designing this to accommodate more flow, like to allow for more flow? And the answer is not really at this point. The town is pretty limited on its discharge capacity, and the, the goal of this project is to provide sewer service within this area to reduce nitrogen load. It's, we're not really planning at this point to, for significant growth within the area.
Okay, anyone else? I just have one question, maybe address it to Mr. Johnson, stop, Mr. Renshaw. Unfortunately, I was not at town meeting or, or the Select Board meeting before, but on page one of Ms. Lowell's betterment discussion memo, it talks about the 70/30 split and all of the related costs of the project shall be paid by the town. And it goes on to say, or as may be determined by the Select Board consistent with the law. And I'm just kind of wondering, I mean, I don't want an answer tonight necessarily, but I'm just kind of wondering what does that mean? Does that mean that the 70/30 could be adjusted one way or another? Or, I mean, because it's an interesting, you know, kind of tag to, you know, to the provision.
So I'm not sure exactly what the reference to the law is. Town meeting did vote to set the 70/30 split. And I, I think maybe the statutory reference there is the general law defines betterments and how they can be applied and how they're applied in sewer situations. So the Select Board, you know, there are parameters under the general law under which the Select Board can define what the, what the special benefits are and the general benefits are.
All right. As I say, I mean, I'm not looking for a definitive answer, but I would like to, you know, explore it a little bit in my own mind, maybe with counsel and, you know, you guys, as to what, what, what we can possibly do if we chose to. Okay, now we are on to what, yes, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes.
Please come up.
First, is this PowerPoint available online?
It will be tomorrow.
Wonderful.
On the town's wastewater division webpage.
Please identify yourself, sir.
So.
Identify yourself, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, Stephen Patiti. I live on Nev's Way, within the scope of the project.
Okay.
And, what was the question? Oh, the, the PowerPoint presentation broke down all the costs of the sewer, but I didn't see where it is, and maybe it's built in there. These roads are going to be dug up. They're going to be repaved. And I live on what I believe may be the only dirt road that Gary Nev's paid the town in 1960 to pave, and it never got paved. Will it be paved? Well, we're doing this project.
So.
I sent you an email, I never heard back.
I'm sorry about that. I don't, I, I'm sorry I didn't reply to your email. I don't recall it. So paving is covered, will be covered under each of the construction contracts. I didn't break down all the, all the pieces of the, of the project, but that would be covered under each of the contracts. The plan under this project, we've budgeted to repave the, do a full, full width mill and overlay paving for the, where the road is already paved, within the existing sewer area. Where we're just putting in a force main, which is a pressure pipe with no connections off of it, we expect to pave one lane of the road, not to do a full, full width. So a road that is not paved right now, the, the intent is not to pave any, pave, pave that road as part of this project. The, the goal is to restore paving where it was previously paved.
Question there that would be added to that is that my road would, will cost less in this project, because you don't have to reclaim pavement, and you don't have to dig it up, you don't have to reclaim it, you don't have to repave it. But we're going to be betterment it the same like every other property. So that's a food for thought.
Thank you.
I hear what you're saying. I, I will say one thing, which is that costs are not 100% consistent, you know, from one street to another, from one area to another. You know, it is, it is very difficult to make things 100% fair in a project. And in general, what we're doing is restoring what's there now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Goldsop?
Maybe more of a, a comment and a concern, given changes in state law regarding ADU by right. The comment that we're not planning for additional density in this area raises some concerns about situations that we may find ourselves in the future with regard for, with regard to the question that was asked about desire to add ADUs and the capacity that we might have in our sewers.
So I, I think what the gentleman was saying, so ADUs are not my specialty. I'm, I'm not in the planning world, but I.
Like I said, maybe more of a comment and, and food for thought, but just a concern.
Right. But I think what the gentleman was, was referring to was that properties are having to reduce, eliminate a bedroom from the home in order to allow a bedroom in the, in the ADU. So that is keeping our four-bedroom assumption consistent.
But to, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also share Vice Chair Goldsop's concern is like, I, I think there are, there's a number of the areas in this proposal, and this will happen with future projects too, is we are going to see growth, I feel. So is that, is that baked in, the not projecting for more units or, or more folks, or is that something that's up for talking about?
So, so we certainly designed the project, the sewer mains, the sewer pipes and the sewer lift station and all of that can accommodate more flow. So we have definitely designed the project to allow more flow. I just mean, in our, I, yeah, what I meant was, we have not gone out and forecast growth for this area, and we're not going to try to do that as part of this project. But the, the, the town's limitation is discharge capacity, and the town is working to alleviate that or solve that problem with an outfall. The, the collection system in the street is not the limiting factor, and it won't be for, and the lift stations will not be the limiting factor for this project. Okay.
One final question, does, does the betterment need to be paid at the time of transfer of the property? I mean, I know.
No, it can be.
It's a bit of a discussion between buyer and seller, but is there anything that would mandate that it be paid at that time?
Oh, if you're selling the property?
Right.
So that is up to the two lenders. If, if there's a bank on each side, the banks, the banks involved have a strong opinion about that. And some are more flexible than others.
So there's nothing in the policy, it's really up to the parties themselves?
So, so there, I know there's been a lot of discussion of that, and then people have examples where they, they had to pay off the betterment at the time of sale, and it was, and in those cases, it's because one or the other of the banks required that. There are, as I understand it, banks have, out there that don't require it, but it is a consideration.
We're not making them pay for it. We're not making them pay for it at that time.
No.
Okay. We'll move to what we are now calling, at least at this stage, grinder-pump approach. Oh, sorry, Doug. I switched.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that with regard to the baked-in additional capacity, with the flow-neutral bylaw giving the right to have four bedrooms now, for most people, that will be, give the opportunity to have an ADU if they, for instance, have three-bedroom homes, they can now add that fourth bedroom. So even without actually accounting for it, there is probably some potential for growth.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
Right. Yes. I should say on growth, our planning did assume, did take into account some future growth. I just meant that it wasn't the goal of this project to plan for how that might work and where it might come from. The goal of the project is to sewer. On grinder-pump approach.
I could hear that.
Was that it? Any questions? Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So in 2014, the town petitioned the state legislature to allow the town to use borrowed funds for costs associated with grinder pumps that were going to be installed on private property for the Little Pond project. Because that act was specific to the Little Pond project, the town is planning to petition the state legislature to allow the town to borrow funds for this purpose for future sewer projects. This requires a town meeting vote, so it will be up at the November town meeting. The select board voted a grinder-pump policy in 2016 for the Little Pond project. A grinder, and it is a Little Pond policy. So the grinder-pump approach needs, will need to be adopted for the Great Pond Phase One project. The draft approach that I'm outlining here tonight was prepared by starting with the town's 2016 Little Pond project grinder-pump policy and modifying it to clarify it, where I felt that it was unclear, and to reflect how the 2016 policy has actually been implemented, was actually implemented for the Little Pond project. This approach is provided for discussion purposes. The word "may" is used here for town responsibilities, and so it will be up to the select board to decide if the word "may," you know, decide whether that's a shall or a, or not. So provision of grinder pumps. The town may buy grinder pumps and provide them free of charge for single-family residential properties and for individually-owned residential condominiums. Under the Little Pond project, the town provided grinder pumps to 681 single-family residential properties. A few of those were single-family residential condo units, but the town provided, bought and provided those grinder pumps to property, residential property owners. The town did not provide pumps for multifamily residential, commercial, or mixed-use properties. The town also didn't provide pumps for properties that were developed after the municipal project was completed. So, for example, a vacant lot where somebody came along later and built a house, when we were done with the project, we were no longer buying and giving out grinder pumps. Pump installation. Just as with a gravity sewer connection, the property owner will be responsible for connection of the buildings on their property to the sewer lateral installed to the property line by the town. So the town's putting mains in a street and a lateral, which is a pipe from the sewer, a pipe in the street, to the property line. And then the property, the property owner will hire and pay a contractor to install the pump and the piping and the electrical to connect their building to the sewer lateral at the property line. That's what happened with the Little Pond project for grinder pumps. And like I said, it's like a gravity connection in that responsibility from the street, from the property line to the building is the property owner's responsibility. Pump ownership and right of access. At the time of pump transfer, the town may transfer ownership of the pump to the property owner, and the property owner may grant the town right of access to the property for future pump maintenance and replacement. And the way this worked on the Little Pond project was we had a form that was signed by each property owner when their contractor came to pick up the pump, and when the property owner had to sign that form and it said that the property owner was taking ownership of the pump, even though the town was providing it free of charge, and, but that the property owner was going to allow the town access for future maintenance. Pump maintenance. The town may provide pump maintenance. Currently, in the Little Pond sewer areas, property owners call the pump service contractor when there's an issue, and the service contractor comes out, does whatever maintenance is required, and then bills the town. And those invoices are paid from the wastewater division's operating budget. That's the way it works now. Pump replacement. On reaching the end of the pump's useful service life with no evidence of abuse and improper use, which I'll talk a little bit more in a minute, the town may provide for the replacement of the pump. So there's a pump unit, which is the tank that the pump goes in, there's the pump itself and the, all the items inside the pump, there's a control panel. The town has been, so grinder pumps have been out there in the Little Pond sewer area since 2016. They were installed between 2016 and 2018. And we have replaced that pump core, the pump itself, in a handful of, on a handful of properties, but in most cases, it's small, it's smaller maintenance that's been required. Partial compensation or subsidy for pump installation cost. The town may provide a flat, one-time partial compensation or subsidy for the cost of the grinder pump installation. For the Little Pond project, on average, it costs residential property owners about $1,800 more, on average, to complete a grinder-pump sewer connection than a gravity connection, though the caveat is, of course, that sewer connection costs vary widely, even among gravity connections or among grinder-pump connections, due to all kinds of factors, like the size of the lot and where the septic, existing septic was on the property and what the elevation was and all those things. So I, we had hundreds of actual costs for installation, and we looked at those, and this was the average cost difference that we found. The town paid $1,800 to each of these, of the property owners to whom the town had provided a pump, once all the sewer connection requirements were met. Temporary power. For properties that do not have backup generators, during a power outage, the town may, to the degree reasonable and feasible, provide grinder-pump pump-down service up to once per day. The Little Pond policy on this was that the town would provide generator service. I have provided a little bit more clarification, because this is tough, or it is potentially a very large commitment. This involves driving a truck with a portable generator on the back of it to each property that calls for the service, and using the generator to power the pump unit to pump down the chamber. This provides a limited amount of additional storage, so the property owner still does need to conserve water, limit water use until the power comes back on. This service may be challenging or even impossible in some circumstances to do for all the properties in the area. If, for example, the power's out in the entire area, or if there are downed trees blocking roads, deep snow, you can imagine that the town can't commit to this 100%, but the town's certainly committed in the past to do this, and we have done this on several occasions. Property owner responsibilities after installation. There are a couple of them. One is proper use of the pumps, i.e. discharging only sanitary waste to the sewer, not grease, rags, hard items. If pump maintenance is required due to improper use, then the town has the right, will have the right to charge the property owner for that specific maintenance. And the property owner is also responsible for protecting the pump after sewer connection, meaning if the property owner is going to expand on their property and expand their home, they need to protect that pump during that construction. Funding for all of these items. So funds have been included in the capital appropriation amount to allow for grinder-pump purchase and a subsidy equivalent to what was provided last time. This doesn't necessitate a certain approach, but it would enable the town to proceed with a similar approach for the Great Pond project as the town employed for the Little Pond project. Any grinder-pump purchase and subsidy will not be covered under the state revolving fund loan, and therefore, we won't get the 25% loan forgiveness on it, and would be paid for by the town. That, again, is covered in the financing plan, the funding plan for this project. Funds will need to be included in the operating budget each year for the wastewater division to implement whatever maintenance and pump replacement approach and power outage approach is voted. Pump next steps. Obviously, to discuss the pump approach, there will be a November town meeting vote to petition the legislature, and the legislature will need to vote on that, on that request. And then any, reminding you that any town pump bid and purchase, like if the town's going to go out to bid for grinder pumps, we won't be doing that now for, until mid to late 2027. So there's some time before this is actually going to happen. And then any pump subsidy would, of course, occur even later, after the pump is installed and the permits are closed out. So late 2020, or 2027 to 2028. That's it.
A question. Are you aware of any third-party providers that cover the power outage situation in other municipalities? In other words, the town contract with a provider that take on that responsibility?
I'm not aware of that happening in other towns. It is possible that it, so the town, Falmouth took on more responsibility and helped out property owners more than occurred in some other towns. I'm not aware of other towns doing that. We have not, in the occasions where we've done it, we weren't doing it ourselves. During a power outage, the wastewater division is, you know, potentially occupied with other issues, so we've had another contractor do that. So I think that's what you're asking, is can you have a contractor do it? And the answer is yes, we have. I don't know if another town has provided that service for property owners.
And one more question. Do I understand that the grinder pumps will be given to the property owners free of charge?
That's what happened for the Little Pond sewer project. It's, so the select board's going to need to deliberate and decide if that is what's going to happen again.
Would the cost of that be a special benefit cost that effectively property owners would be paying 70% of that?
So that's how I, let's, let me go back to that. So I had the grinder pump procurement as in, as in the project cost to be paid for in 70/30 as part of the betterment. I had the grinder pump subsidy, if it occurs, as being a general benefit cost, not being charged to the property owners.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Goldstone?
I guess just clarifying on, so that in actual fact means that the homeowners are paying 70% of the cost of the grinder pump?
Yep.
Not that it's completely free? And that is, that's what happened with the Little Pond project?
Grinder pumps were part of the betterment, yeah. The grinder, but not the subsidy.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Every, every house needs a grinder pump?
Do you want him to stand up?
Let's just let Mr. Brown ask a question. Mr. Richardson, if he has one, and then we'll get to you.
Amy, this is a question I should have asked in advance, but it's just got me thinking now. Can you give us any indication of how much more expensive it would be if we tried to do this with all gravity rather than using the grinder pumps? Was there any numbers?
So, it's not possible to do it all by gravity unless you have lift station sites for, that would allow all of it to flow by gravity. So you need, you need a lift station site that is with, that is at the right elevation and the right distance from all of the properties in order to get it there by gravity. And it is very difficult to cite, it is very difficult to cite lift stations, and we were, we were not able to do that in part of this project area. So I'll say that this gentleman here was, had spoken a question out loud, which was, is all of this going to be served by grinder pumps? And the answer is no, but a lot of it. So the entire T-Ticket path peninsula, this peninsula on the right in that figure, is entirely served by grinder pumps, or it's a low-pressure system. This area on the west side, that's on Maravista, most of that will be served by gravity, but the properties on the far edge, where the land starts to drop off at the end of the streets, will also be grinder pump. So we can talk more about that at a future meeting, but yes, much of the service area will be serviced by grinder pumps, but not all.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
More comment than a question, but the Governor Healy just released an affordability bill on energy and environment, and I think there might be, I just texted our legislative director, couldn't hear back from him, but I think there might be some movement in this area, where, I don't know if you've seen anything about that. It was literally released last week, but I thought there might have been some carve-outs to reduce the costs.
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Thank you.
When you get more information, let me know.
I think you have to leverage federal funds to access that.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Okay. There's no other questions or comments? Stay tuned. Yes, sir. Mr. Walrath.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tom Walrath, Precinct 3 precinct captain, and Phase One of Great Pond Project really surrounds our particular precinct. And I would just say that, you know, to the board, to take what Amy has put together and has worked on for so long under consideration, because it's not only the $904 for the betterment, but we have, or is going to have that installed cost that we know about. And more importantly, after it's all said and done, our water and sewer bill is going to at least double and possibly triple. So that's, that'll be there. That's a forever cost as well. So that's all I'm asking for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Goldstone?
Is it possible to even ballpark what the cost to homeowners in different parts of Falmouth will be when we're done with this whole thing? And I don't mean this project. I mean with all of the sewer. Understanding that this is happening over a very extended period of time and costs are going to change, but I think one of the things that keeps coming up is, and rightfully so, we're talking about the inequity of what residents in one part of town have to pay when their part of town is sewered or when they have to do IA, but then we're all paying into the 30%, if it's, you know, a 70/30 split for all of these projects. Is there any way to get at what that total cost is or will be by the time we're, hopefully at some point done?
It's a good question. Yeah, I certainly don't have that now.
I wouldn't expect you to.
And there's a lot, there's a lot we don't have numbers on yet, but, so the town will be doing watershed planning over the next couple of years and can come up with a better answer about that. There is, as you point out, additionally, the cost of the outfall, which will be borne by, I assume, the town as a whole. So yes, there are a lot of costs related to sewer infrastructure, and we can, we can look at presenting that in the future, presenting it in that way in the future.
Can I also ask one, much more specific question, other end of the spectrum. In the Little Pond project, you noted that grinder pumps were provided to single-family residential properties, but not multifamily residential properties. Do you, do you know the reasoning behind why they were provided to single-family but not multifamily?
So, that, that's something that the board can discuss. The discussion for Little Pond was all around single-family residential. There were, that property involved 1,400 sewer connections, and the overwhelming majority of them were single-family properties. And so that dominated the discussion. There was really very little discussion at the select board level about, or, you know, at the town level, about other types of properties and how they would be handled as far as grinder pumps. So it was really more of an interpretation after this policy was... So it was really more of an interpretation after this policy was my interpretation, after the policy was voted, because the discussion was entirely around single-family residential.
So something we should consider as we're thinking about SEUs and betterments is also that grinder pump benefit at the other end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, no other questions or comments. Amy, thank you very much for, as always, a wonderful presentation. Stay tuned, we'll certainly let everybody know when the next community session is going to be. And if you have any specific questions or comments, please send them to the select board so we have them in advance of the meeting and hopefully be able to answer them at that time. So, thank you. Okay. Our next matter is to read. I'll let the audience settle down a little bit. Can I actually read it?
I don't want to read it actually.
If you want to, I mean, if you want to read it, go right ahead. I mean, it's kind of forcible and I wouldn't encourage reading if you want it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so our next item is to read and discuss a statement and letter regarding localized operations and practices. As many of you will remember, we did have a discussion, Chief Laurie, Sheriff Parkley, and some, some public comment. And our decision was that we would fashion a statement to, to reflect the position of the, of the town of Falmouth with respect to ICE operations. Member Richardson and Member Goldstone worked together to, to draft the document which, which we have before us this, this evening. So I'm going to ask Member Goldstone to go ahead and write, read it.
All right. The Town of Falmouth is committed to enabling our residents, businesses, employees, and visitors the opportunity to live, work, and experience our town's unique charm today, tomorrow, and for future generations. We strive to be an inclusive, welcoming, equitable, and diverse community, and we take seriously our responsibilities for economic prosperity and the health, safety, and well-being of residents and visitors. Trust, including trust that constitutional and civil rights will be upheld by all law enforcement officials, is foundational to the kind of community we strive to be. Our local police work diligently to build trust and relationships, acting as guardians first, enforcers only when necessary. In contrast, some of the tactics employed by federal immigration and law enforcement officials operating in Falmouth in recent weeks have contributed to a climate of fear that undermines the work that our own town staff, including our police department, do each day. This has been reported in our local newspaper, shared on social media, and communicated directly to members of this board by concerned constituents. We do not dispute the rights and responsibilities of federal officials to enforce the laws of our country. However, it is essential that this be done in ways that respect and uphold constitutional and civil rights to freedom from unlawful discrimination, freedom from unreasonable search and seizure, freedom from self-incrimination, and access to due process under the law. In addition, especially given recent events in Minnesota where a man impersonating a police officer shot and in one case killed elected officials and their spouses, it is important that all law enforcement officials do their utmost to respond to lawful requests for identification and legal documentation. It is not enough to simply wear fatigues or invoke the name of a law enforcement agency. Finally, while Massachusetts state law stipulates that local police do not and will not assist or participate in federal immigration enforcement, it is important that they be aware of potentially disruptive activities in our town. We encourage the traditional collegial sharing of information between law enforcement agencies to ensure safe, effective operations. The Town of Falmouth has many resources to offer residents and visitors, and all services of the town are offered independent of immigration status. Information about immigration status is not requested by town staff. More information about resources can be found on the town's website, www.falmouthmath.gov. We encourage residents of the Town of Falmouth to avail themselves of these resources to become familiar with their rights and address concerns. And as always, if you see something, say something. Report suspicious activity to the appropriate authorities.
Very good, thank you. I'd just make one comment. With respect to the, you have one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. In addition, especially given recent events in Minnesota where a man impersonating a police officer shot and in one case killed, I would just say, an elected official, because it was only one, and her spouse, only one. That's the only change I have.
Two shot?
Two, two cases, one, two fatalities instead of.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I was focusing on the kill, but, just my comment, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I add is I think we should consider a separate letter directly to our federal delegation, not our state delegation. I think it's important to make that distinction on this issue, because frankly, you know, working in the state office, not much our state representatives can do, and I think we can, you know, be more pointed to our federal partners. And I think that this is a great, thank you, hats off to Heather, there's more her leadership than mine on this one, but I think that it echoes seriousness of this issue, but I also think we should have a separate one directly, directly. Frankly, I've been, I've been pretty disappointed, particularly in our congressman, his leadership on this issue, it's a failure in my book. And I think we should have a separate, separate item for that.
How does the board want to proceed? Are we good in issuing this statement as we discuss some edits and then work on a second statement as Mr. Richardson suggests?
A separate, different letter?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, because this one, I think, is more our town's stance, if I'm not mistaken, and that one would be more what do we actually want our elected officials to do for us? And then one other thing while I have the mic, perhaps symbolic, and I don't know the legal of it, but maybe this exact same thing in Portuguese, if that's something we can do, I think that would also make sense.
Can we, would we put this on our town website, do you think? Yes, good. Okay, so that's where we'll go, we'll go with this, everyone? I mean, I don't know, do you want to make a motion to adopt this statement as amended with some edits?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Brown, make a motion.
I would move approval and post this to the town website. It's our select board position on ICE immigration action.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Renshaw?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and vice chair. Just wanted to mention also to the public, we are planning on a, holding a community conversation, community forum meeting, where we're going to have hopefully an open dialogue. I'd like to invite some, some guests to that, some of the federal agencies. Chief Laurie mentioned that in the past, he's had good cooperation and dialogue with DEA and FBI. Unfortunately, not so much with, with ICE. So it'd be nice, in my opinion, to have full participation of all of the law enforcement agencies and have that dialogue.
Thank you, and I, I'm glad we're moving towards that kind of a forum. Did you have anything else, Ms. Goldstone?
Yes, just on the separate letters, I think what we had talked about was sending this statement along with a letter to legislative representatives. And I guess I didn't feel in, in kind of drafting this that, that I had enough of a sense of what the board wanted in those letters, and so I don't know if we want to take a moment to, to discuss what, what those requests might be. I think I heard common sense immigration reform last time, ensuring that members of our community right now get some clarity and some confidence in what their status is. We talked about making sure that Falmouth is, is represented and recognized as a, as an impacted community. And I agree with, with Mr. Richardson, that I think those requests are best directed to the federal level. There has been a motion in a few states recently, actually to create state law clarifying the, or reinforcing the need for law enforcement officials who are not explicitly conducting undercover investigations to be in uniform and not wearing face coverings. And so I wonder if that is something that, because those, those tactics are part of what we talked about in our last discussion, being contributing to the climate of fear that is so problematic, whether we would also want to address a letter at the state level to request consideration of, of that sort of measure.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I would like to get this approved and up, and as our statement, and then maybe asking you again and Mr. Richardson to work on one or two letters that we can convey to our elected officials, federal and state, you know, suggesting the importance of what we see in some of the suggestions that we have.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second with respect to the statement as edited. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr., thank you. Okay. We are now here to review the RFPs for disposition of town-owned land for affordable housing as approved by the November 2024 town meeting. Mr. Renshaw, you want to tee us up?
I do want to tee us up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, as they're setting up the presentation, I wanted to make a, make a statement. I understand over the weekend, there was, there were some postings on social media to the effect, I'll paraphrase, that this is a, a land grab, cash grab for developers. What you're, Mr. Chair and the select board, what, what the town planner and the housing coordinator are about to present to you is based upon, quite frankly, the number one strategic priority in the select board strategic plan. These folks take direction from me, and as you know, I take direction from you as the elected governing body. So I want the community to know, I, I made this comment a couple of years ago as well, these folks have a job to do. And unfortunately, sometimes they, they're at the, the, the end of people's ire in the community. And again, I wanted to refute strongly the, the statements in social media over the weekend that this is about a land grab. These were identified as surplus properties in the town. There are over 100 such properties. The town planner did a really thorough and excellent job, in my opinion, vetting these properties. Staff discussed them. We presented it at town meeting, town meeting approved these, as you all know. So again, I just wanted to make that statement, Mr. Chair, and get it out to the community that, you know, the town planner, housing coordinator, the staff in general are following my direction to pursue affordable housing and increase the inventory of affordable housing in the community. And that's all it is, it's not about a land grab.
If I can ask either you, Mr. Renshaw, or Jed, or Kim, as, as they go forward, can you just kind of give us a brief summary of how we got here, you know, from town meeting and where we are now and how things got to be developed? Maybe you're talking about that as, anyway, so go ahead. Floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. For introduction's sake, my name is Judd Cornoch, the town planner.
And I'm Kimberly Fish, the housing coordinator.
Soon to be Director of Community Development.
Just minutes away.
Potentially.
Right, right, still vote.
Depends on how good he does.
So as, as you covered just briefly before we started, tonight's agenda is really to introduce the topic of these requests for proposals. We'll go through the some, the sites themselves and summarize some of the characteristics. Kim and I will sort of tag team the, the presentation, which will cover some details of the requests for proposals, and then of course we'll take any questions that you might have. So to start off and to sort of repeat a little bit of, of what the town manager had just mentioned, in 2023, the planning department started this analysis of town-owned properties to try and figure out what the best case would be for potential future use. That was an exhaustive effort. It took approximately a year and a half to, to complete that, and here we are with four properties that we think are, are ready to go, if you will. So then, again, in November of '24, we came before town meeting, there were two articles sponsored by the town to dispose of a total of four properties. We'll get into the details of that in a second. And then there were two petitioner articles for two additional properties to be disposed of. And then moving forward from that, we worked with consulting firm to draft the documents that you have in your meeting packets and that Kim will be posting on the website after this meeting this evening. And so we'll walk through some of the specifics of those sites and the RFP in a second. So first and foremost, the first site is Zero Locust Field Road. That includes two properties, and those parcel IDs are listed there. As you can see up on the screen, they're just north of the high school property. So if you traveled north of the high school, you'd see them on the right-hand side. Together, they are approximately 6.1, 6.2 acres. They're both vacant. I'm going to go through some of the characteristics here, but I'm not going to spend a ton of time. The zoning is AGA, agricultural A. The other category is some of the challenges or overlay districts which would further restrict potentially development in that area. The WRPOD is the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Both of these properties are in the minimal flood zone, so we consider those to be flood zone X. There are no environmental concerns that we saw on both of these properties. They were acquired individually, as you can see up on the screen, both by tax title, and we do not see any deed restrictions on them. So that is the first site. Second site is Zero West Falmouth Highway. Again, two properties. This is just west of the Sippewisset Interchange, as you can see on the image. Together, they are 2.8 acres. Again, both of them are vacant properties. Zoning is public use. There is no concern in terms of any other overlay district that would restrict development on the site. Again, flood zone X, minimal concern, no environmental issues, acquired in 1931, and we do not see any deed restriction on both of these properties. Now, these are the two petitioner article sites. First is 20 Brigantine Drive, and the second is 21 Pheasant Lane. As you can see up on the screen, they are smaller properties as compared to the previous two. Brigantine is larger of the two, it's approximately just over half an acre, and Pheasant Lane is just under or just about a quarter acre. Both are vacant properties. Zoning is AGA, which again is agricultural A, RC, residential C. Brigantine has some challenges related to the fact that it's located within the Zone 2, again, further reducing the number of bedrooms on the site, also that it's in, within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. And NSA refers to a nitrogen-sensitive area. So again, those are limiting factors, if you will, when you talk about development on the site. Both within flood zone Xs, so minimal concern there, no environmental concerns on the sites, and as you can see up on the screen, they were acquired separately and no deed restriction that we know of are on the sites themselves. So at this point, I'm going to pass the baton over to Kim.
Excuse me, Jed, just want, do we know how they were acquired? Were they acquired by tax title or were they sold to the town? Or do we have that information?
Believe they were both tax titled, but I can verify that.
Thank you.
So the request for proposal details, we thought we'd go through, to try to streamline this, there's a lot of elements of the RFP that's going to be the same on each RFP. And then there's going to be some differences because of the individual sites themselves. This is the components, site comparison. The first three you'll see are different, and then, and I'll discuss those later in another slide. And then it goes into what is the same, which is the building design, amenities, energy efficiency, accessibility, wastewater permitting. So this is everything that's the same, so I'll briefly go through what is in each RFP. So it's the standard information. Section 1, introduction, summary, background, contact information, timeline. Section 2 is general information, availability of RFP, procurement rules, proposal, submission, site briefing, optional, and that's optional for proposers. And section 3, request for proposals, the purpose, development objectives, afford, which we'll talk in more detail in another slide, affordability, unit types, tenure, building design and aesthetics, energy efficiency, accessibility, wastewater disposal, and site information, site map, utilities, and project permitting.
Excuse me, Kim, could I stop you one second there? Could you explain what it means when you say each unit shall be visitable?
Yes, I'll get into more of the detail in the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
So the development objective, objectives, which is a more, just a more detailed explanation. The building design and aesthetics, the appearance of the proposed development should be harmonious with existing norms for dwellings in the Town of Falmouth. Energy efficiency, we understand this is a priority, so in the proposal, we include net zero energy efficiency will be considered high, highly favorable, that will be in the criteria. Accessibility, and Mr. Chair, this is what you were asking about, the town seeks proposals that maximize accessibility, both in the buildings and in the design of the site, each unit shall be visitable. Each unit shall be visitable, which is no stair access to the unit, and wider doors so that wheelchairs can go in, and a bathroom on the first floor.
But that's different than accessible as far as a standard when building, and which one is more, what's the difference, I guess, between accessible and visitable, is my question?
Do you want to go into the detail of that?
So just briefly, the main difference is full accessibility has a lot of other factors. So you would normally have lower countertops, you might have spaces, exactly, handbars, you might have audible alarms. Visitability is more just about providing an opportunity for people who want to visit you, who may be challenged in that way to be able to get into the property.
Thank you, Jed. And then we have wastewater disposal, which we just heard from Amy, is extremely important to our community. So the town will require the selected developer to install an innovative alternative septic system acceptable to the Board of Health. So we do understand that this is more of an expense, but we felt it was important to include moving forward with new builds. So this is going back to the components, but what's different between each site. The Locust Field Road, this highlights the affordability. We're suggesting 30% to 120 AMI, multifamily, and it be a rental. We also have in the RFP, we're suggesting a max of 40 units, and it would be, we included it when you take a look at the details in the RFP, to be highly advantageous to include multiple buildings instead of one, just one building on the lot. Zero West Falmouth Highway, it's about 2.8 acres, 60% to 140 AMI duplex or triplex, and these are, we are suggesting these to be home ownership. And in the RFP, we're suggesting up to six units. And the two smaller lots. So there might be a change on this one, just to let you know, when we drafted this, we had all of the permitting under Chapter 40B permitting, which would require these two to be at 80%, but we since found that we need to do a little bit more research because under the new governor's bill, we may be, one of them may be by right, so not have to go through Chapter 40B, and the other one may be able to go through another permitting process, which would allow flexibility of the select board to decide if they want to go to a higher AMI on this. If you go to a higher AMI, it just wouldn't be able to go on the subsidized housing So I'm going to pass the baton back to Jed.
Okay, so section 4 of the RFPs gets into the technical proposal that is required for the proposer. Again, this deals with non-price-related items. So as you can see up on the screen, the developer and the development team is to be essentially described. Tell us more about the team itself that is proposing to take on this project, their past experience, some of the past projects that they've been, you know, involved in. And then the development concept and conceptual design drawings are somewhat similar. The development concept really is a verbal description of exactly what they're proposing and how they plan to meet the specifics of the RFP, while the conceptual design is essentially what that is. It's site drawings where you would see the buildings placed with landscaping and your driveways, et cetera. You get a sense for the overall development scheme, so to speak. And then, of course, building elevations and floor plans, which are very important to identifying whether or not they meet the requirements of the RFP. Then the last two components are the management plan. So as you can see, it's all about the proposed sale price for each of the units, the strategy for marketing of those units, and then the financial plan, essentially what they plan to offer the town for the properties. Again, this is a component that the select board will want to discuss about what type of amount you're going to be looking for, for someone to purchase these properties, be it very small, large, et cetera. And then, of course, what their financial package looks like in terms of financing the actual development itself. So the last section of the RFP deals with the evaluation criteria. Again, as these proposals come in, we're going to have to score them against one another, and so we want clear and objective criteria. As you can see up on the left-hand side of the screen, there are seven of them. I won't read them aloud, but you get a sense for how this might work. When the proposal comes in, we'll essentially have a committee that reads through them and grades. On the right-hand side, you can see the acronym definition here, highly advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous, and unacceptable. So essentially, each one of the proposals will be scored against each other on those seven criteria, and here's an example of, for example, site design, what it might look like to be advantageous, highly advantageous, et cetera. So in the highly advantageous, as you can expect, they meet all the requirements of the RFP, they take into account all of the criteria that we're looking for up on the slide, but in an advantageous circumstance, they may not have addressed everything, and so on and so forth. So you get a flavor for how the proposals might be scored against one another. So the important component, the timeline. So tonight, we are here talking about the first read, if you will, of these draft RFPs. We plan to hold a public forum on July 23, where we essentially will have this very same presentation, maybe tweak a few things, but explain to the public what these RFPs mean. They'll get a chance to ask us questions, and of course, we'll be taking their input. Then we'll report back to the select board on July 28, so it'll be a fairly quick turnaround to essentially give you an understanding of what people said, some of the comments that they might have had, and it'll give you an opportunity to consider some of the edits that may have been suggested. And then at some point in August, anticipating a favorable vote from you folks, either that evening of July 28 or another meeting thereafter, we would essentially be releasing the RFPs to have folks bid on it. And so that essentially is the timeline, and we are open to any questions. But before I stop, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that these documents are draft, and they are meant to start the conversation, and we hope that, you know, folks spread the word and come to these public forums, because that's where we understand what's important to the public.
And everything will be posted on the housing page, and comments can be emailed to the email address on the slideshow, which is housing@falmouthma.gov. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any particular questions, Member Goldstone?
Well, and I also, before I get to my question, want to build a bit on what Mr. Renshaw said. I also saw some of the comments on social media, and besides the fact that this has been an extensive process to get to this point, that has gone through approvals at multiple levels, I would typically be the first to bemoan the loss of forested land in our town. There are tough choices that have to be made. I actually went and looked at an app that was, that's been developed by some colleagues of mine at Woodwell, was looking at the town of Falmouth land use change from 2011 to 2021. Forest loss has been minimal, right? As we just recognized earlier tonight, 40 years of the 300 Committee, we've been very successful in preserving open space and forested land. Some of the largest loss of forest land in that period of time was actually the restoration of grasslands at Crane, at the Audubon Sanctuary. So we do have to make tough choices, and I think these parcels are good choices. I'm curious what your, if you could share a little bit more of your thinking about the rental versus ownership model, how you decide, I mean, we need a mix of both, so how you were thinking about which ones were which? And I guess, building on the question about visitability, especially, I guess, in an ownership model, what's the feasibility of taking a home built for visitability and actually turning that into a fully accessible home? Is that a possibility? Or would there be such differences that you're stuck at that level of accessibility?
Well, the rental v. home ownership was, the ones that are earmarked for, potentially earmarked for home ownership are the smaller lots, and the larger lot just makes more sense for rentals. And 87%, it says in our Housing Production Plan, 87% of housing in Falmouth is single-family homes, home ownership, so we would like to see our priority, according to the Housing Production Plan in 2024, is rental units. There's a drastic need for it, and it makes more sense on that larger lot on Locust Field. And as far as the visitability to turn into accessibility, it is a much different, having to lower the counters and widen the, even the bathroom is different, so that there is a major difference between full accessibility and visitability. But the visitability, we do think, is a major, we've really been with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, it's been a priority there at that level to win funding. We really like to see more visitable units, especially for the aging community, for the homeownership too, for aging in place.
I guess I'm wondering if it would be possible or desirable to put into, for the two multi-unit sites, a fraction that are actually fully accessible in addition to visitability for the rest of the units?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we actually, we could put that in as a suggestion from the select board, absolutely put it in if that's what you'd like.
I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that this has taken a long time, and I know that the fault doesn't lie with either one of you, and I'm heartened to see how quickly, what your proposed timeline is going forward. But, you know, I just want to make that statement and impress upon you, which I think you know, that there has been much, some dissatisfaction with how long it has taken to get us here. We're here, that's spilt milk, but very anxious to move this along, so thank you. Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you. I echo Chair's comments. You know, this is incredibly important. Member of Town Meeting precinct 9, I remember there was concerns about Zero West Falmouth, this might be outside of scope of this, but I remember there were concerns with Zero West Falmouth Highway about the entries and exits, given its proximity to the highway, and you probably answered it, I just don't remember because there's too much stuff going on. But if you could just speak to that, what you guys have found when looking at the property.
So thank you. That's a good question, and it sort of dovetails to one of the responses I was going to provide, Member Goldstone. So this site in particular, yes, it is right off the highway. It provides for, or it essentially limits, the amount of development that we wanted to put here, simply because of that sharp curve. We would be looking for someone, a potential proposer, to move any sort of roadway or driveway as far west as possible away from the very sharp curve. And it, as I mentioned before, that's why we centered or settled on six units in that site, because although we want to try to maximize as many housing units as possible because of the housing crisis we're in, we're also cognizant of the fact that there's a potential safety issue with creating a lot of housing at that location.
Thank you.
A question, maybe for Peter or Mr. Renshaw. What's the disposition of the property process? I mean, and what'll actually go forward in order to actually do that? Is there procurement, or are there, you know, with respect to the RFPs, I know there's mention of maybe, you know, charging for the property and whether, I mean, that's going to be a decision we're going to have to make, but I'm just wondering, you know, going forward, how this will all play out so that we can get going here?
Yeah, so the RFP is the, sort of the last procurement, last piece of the procurement. So Town Meeting has authorized it. The select board now has the authority to sell the property. So the RFP is used to select the party to whom the town might sell the property, and if there is a successful proposal after all the evaluations, and the board, of course, retains the right to not sell the property, just, you know, if the results of the RFP are not to your satisfaction, you're not obligated to sell, but if you get proposals that meet your requirements, then there would be a sale and a deed transfer as a result of the RFP.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Is there going to be some sort of minimum bid on the property? I had assumed that this was going to be like, just kind of given away to do the housing?
Yeah, so certainly that would be my feeling as well. Housing is very expensive. Your goal is to create as much affordable housing as possible. One of the ways that we subsidize that housing is by providing the land at no charge. Again, through this RFP process, where you determine you've got a housing proposal that meets your needs and requirements.
So to go off of that, would we set the like, or like, I guess, two questions. Is there like a standard profit margin for something like this, where it is, the goal is to have it be negative whatever? Or do we have any part in setting that goal?
So that's a more interesting question, and one reference point I can offer is that under 40B, there is a profit limitation, and there are folks in the room who know that number off the top of my head, and I'm not going to try to remember it. It's always a tricky number, of course, because a developer can put numbers on a page and tell you what their profit margin is, but it might actually be something different. You know, I think we have a decent understanding of what it costs to construct housing, and, you know, all of the metrics that we're seeing says it's very, I was reading an article in the Boston Globe today about the struggles that the city of Boston is having in creating housing, and a lot of projects are sitting and that are permitted, and they're not happening because the financing doesn't work. So, you know, I think, I guess, the simpler, simplest way for me to look at it is, are we getting housing that meets our requirements? There's only so much town, only so much money the town can offer to subsidize that, and then we're meeting our goals. Thank you.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, it was very comprehensive presentation with respect to the RFP and what goes into it. You know, I think we were all surprised to see that we may be trying to get money from somebody, you know, for these lands, so, but that's certainly something we'll discuss as we go forward. Yes, Miss Goldstone?
Question related to that, that may be for Mr. Johnson Staub, or perhaps for Mr. Kornok and Ms. Fish. When you're trying to get put together funding, when a developer is trying to put together funding for a project, obviously, having the support of the town is important. Sometimes having matching funds or demonstration that the town is invested in the project is important. Would we be able to get, I guess, credit for an in-kind donation, or the land being, put a monetary value on that, and have the land be counted as the town's investment in those projects in such situations?
So there, yes, I think it's a sure answer to your question. It depends on the funding that the developer is looking for, that, you know, they may be financing the project in such a way that that's a non-issue, but there are certain state programs that do require some sort of a local contribution, so this would be the town's local contribution.
Anyone else this time?
I guess I would just say, in terms of how we craft these RFPs, and we're going to be talking about more RFPs later on our agenda, I think we should, I think we should shoot for the stars in terms of these RFPs, at least the first time around. What is the housing that we really want? What would we really want to see there? And if we encounter, if we're not getting the bids that we want, if we're encountering challenges, we can always kind of try again and walk that back, but let's ask for what we really want to see.
Very good point, but we want to get this thing moving as well, and I think that's going to be part of our discussion.
Absolutely.
July's going to be a very busy month. We have a public forum on this matter on July 23, and spoken already about the Betterment Policy. So I'll ask members of the audience if they want to come up, and I'm going to limit public comments to just a couple of minutes. You'll have more than enough opportunity to come before the public forum, make your points, have your questions answered. I urge you, as we have from Miss Moynihan already today, you know, receive very I urge you, as we have from Ms. Moynihan already today, you know, received very detailed comments, and we always respect your comments, and you help guide us and come into a, you know, to a conclusion. But, you know, we would appreciate getting those statements well in advance of this particular date, so that Jed and Kim can have an opportunity to go through with it and, you know, and make some proper responses so we can move this forward. But I'd appreciate if you just keep the public comment to a couple of minutes. We will be dealing with this in a more appropriate forum where there's going to be plenty of back and forth. Ms. Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will actually be away on July twenty-third, so we weren't really given notice of that date until today. So, I'll just be very brief. I am Laura Moynihan. I'm the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Trust. Our organization provides homeownership opportunities for working families in Falmouth since the nineteen-eighties, for those of you that don't know us. So, a couple of things. You know, these RFPs are all based on a hundred percent of the units being deed restricted. There's no profit for anybody, okay? So, the rule is twenty percent, you know, limit to twenty percent profit on homeownership for a for-profit developer. But that's why we were surprised to see in the RFPs that there is this reference to the town requiring payment for this property. I mean, in my view, that's just not appropriate. You know, in the past, the town has conveyed these properties, when they put them out for RFP, St. Mark's Road, for example, they're gifted, they're sold for a dollar. And the development budgets take, have to take that into account. So when you're looking at a development budget, you're looking at how the developer is financing the project to have a zero out, you know, no loss is what you're looking for. How is this developer going to do this project without a loss? So, not what profit are they going to make? There is no profit. So, on the couple of technical requirements, these RFPs are different from some that we see, in that they're asking for engineering in terms of drainage plans. I mean, that's an incredibly significant expense for somebody to be providing for an RFP who may not even be getting the award. So for a nonprofit, that's a very onerous expense. So I would ask that you consider changing that to what we typically see as a preliminary site concept plan. Also, on the two single-family house lots, Twenty Brigantine and Twenty-One Pheasant Lane, by July twenty-third, we'd like to see that verification on the zoning. I mean, I submitted information on Pheasant Lane in April of twenty-twenty-four, you know, saying that it is a buy-right buildable lot. We referenced at Town Meeting last November that, or excuse me, that was Brigantine. We referenced at Town Meeting in November that Twenty-One Pheasant Lane was now buildable under the state statute. So, that's a very significant point, because limiting those two lots to eighty percent AMI means you're not going to have developers lining up with RFPs. There's going to be a significant loss on those two lots. You know, if you can only, if you could build the house, it costs five fifty, six hundred to build the house, you could only sell it for two fifty. Maybe you get a hundred and fifty from the town, you have a gap of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That has to come from the public fundraising. So, the higher that AMI goes on those lots, the more feasible it is to actually build those houses and not have to go out and do significant fundraising. So I would really appreciate if that work could be confirmed through the Building Commissioner in the next couple of weeks. He will not give it to us, but he will give it to you. And it's very important to confirm that so we can move ahead and up those AMIs on those two lots. The only other comment, other than what I submitted today, was with respect to Locust Field, I know Linda's going to talk about this, I do think it's short-sighted in not including the ownership element. You know, we, these projects should be designed on six acres to cover the whole sphere of affordability, as well as ownership and rental. There's two other projects, one in Orleans and one in Edgar Town, where they have discussed, you know, including four or six ownership units, as well as thirty-six, forty rental units. And that's important to address all the needs of the community on a six-acre parcel of town land. I also would ask that if things get hung up on the Locust Field parcel because of the size of it, that the Select Board vote to move ahead with the other ones, segment this out, so that we do not have to wait months for these smaller project lots, that if everybody's satisfied with it, issue the RFPs and continue working on the other ones. But this lumping everything together is just causing more delays. So, I will submit a formal letter for your July twenty-third, but I think there is a little bit of work that needs to be done in the next couple of weeks, and we would really appreciate, given the time that's passed here, that that be a number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady in the rear first, and then Ms. Clark, please step up. You, did you want to speak? You had your hand raised?
Yes, I did.
Please, identify yourself. Identify yourself.
Oh, yes.
You can take it out or pull it down a little bit. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Cynthia Eisen, Brigantine Drive, Falmouth. And I just wanted to speak to the lot that's been discussed here, because it hasn't been brought up. I had an email with both the Assistant Town and yourself. A large portion of the lot is designated as an easement, drainage easement for the neighborhood. Significant portion of the lot shows up here on the plot plan. Being a neighbor for, geez, twenty-six years now at Twenty-Six Brigantine Drive, it does its job. A large pool of water settles right into the middle of the lot, as opposed to from the road where the drains off and then goes into the lot, absorbs back into the ground. And the email from both of you and the Town Manager said that this needs to be maintained. If this is going to be a development as it is now, if it's going to be a house built on, or whatever's going to be built on it, needs to be maintained by the developer, and then that would transfer on to whoever purchased the property. But according to the plot plan, it's a very significant amount of the lot. So I just wanted to make, it hasn't been brought up, so I would make people aware of that, the Select Board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you have a copy of the plot plan, but I haven't seen one.
Want to submit a copy and?
I have not seen it up on the screen or anywhere else, but, okay?
We'll certainly be looking at it and considering it going forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark?
I'm sure you'll be able to read it right away. Linda Clark, President of Falmouth Housing Corporation. We are the largest nonprofit affordable housing company in the town of Falmouth. We currently have three hundred units, as you may or may not know. And I'd like to speak a little bit about the Zero Locust Field. I think the best use of six acres of land is going to be a mixed use, which would include ownership. So looking at six houses and forty rental, I think that's a perfect use for that parcel. Why are we going to waste land? That makes no sense. We are currently over at Little Pond Place. That parcel is eleven acres. We had to pull four acres out of the flood zone, otherwise the project wouldn't be feasible. We can't afford flood zone, flood insurance. So, we have another seven acres in the rear we really can't do anything with. But that's not the case at Locust Field. That's a whole different scenario. Six acres of land is a lot of land, and we can make good use with affordable housing. We can cover every area of need. Homeownership, thirty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent, a hundred percent, one-twenty. We can cover it all. We can help every, every affordable housing need within the community in one shot, six acres. So I think the draft should be revisited in regards to strictly rental. Forty units for rental is a perfect number. We don't want to go any bigger than that. We wouldn't if we responded. Forty is perfect. And I think that the partnership with an ownership and rental developer would be a perfect scenario.
Are there any examples in town?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not, not in Falmouth.
Not in Falmouth? Okay, thank you.
There are Orleans, Prince, Governor Prince, Prince, I think it's HAC is getting involved with that, and so is Habitat. They're partnering with rentals and ownership. Like I say, we don't want to waste land. This doesn't make any sense. I think that whoever the consultant was that put this RFP together, I don't know, do they know our town? Do they not know our town? They in the habit of wasting land? I don't know. But that's my opinion. We do have right now, on staff, we have a tenant relations person who works full-time, and we're currently, we're assisting our rental tenants in moving forward. That's the goal. I mean, we have a, right now, we probably have six to ten tenants that are ready to move on. But they've applied for lotteries, they didn't make the lotteries, their credit score wasn't high enough. Our tenant relations person is working with them to understand, before the lotteries come up, what, this is what you need to do, a list. And we'll assist them with their lists. Get to the bank. What does my credit score have to be? Six months before the application is due. They can correct, they can make corrective measures with things like that. But we currently have, I got to, it's got to be six to ten people that are ready to transition out. We basically have, we've got a logjam. Like, this is, in order to free up more affordable housing. The ownership piece is in need. Right now, we, so is the rental, don't get me wrong, we currently have twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four people on wait lists. That's a lot of people. Lot of families and individuals looking for housing. But again, we need to transition people out of the existing housing, move them along. This is the goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And please, as I said before, please put your comments in writing, get it to us as soon as you possibly can.
I most certainly will.
And we will certainly take all of that information.
Great.
As advisement.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do to help to solve the housing problem here. Mr. Glasso?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Michael Glasso, and one who simply, if you have, just a couple of quick comments on process. I participated in a lot of RFPs over the years, and there's actually two ways of doing one, it's the way that you guys have outlined here this evening. The other is a two-step process. The first process is to qualify the developers by looking at their resume and what they've done before, and then narrow down that list to a few qualified developers to go on to the second phase, which is then to provide the plans and the documents and everything, which, you know, costs a developer a lot of money to do. I think you get a better result from that two-step process, qualifying people, select a few that meet the qualifications of what we want, and then have them go on to the second phase. And that's when they start to spend the money for plans and everything else that's required. So I don't know if that was considered in your discussions about putting together the RFPs, but that might be something that would end up with a better result for the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glasso. Mr. Garrison?
Chairman Scully and members of the Select Board, I'm Dave Garrison, Chair of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee. On behalf of our committee, I appear before you this evening to express our strong support for the RFPs before you dispose of town-owned parcels for affordable housing. This past year, the first year of the implementation of the town's revised housing production plan, our committee has been tracking the implementation of several strategies set forth in the HPP. One of those strategies, number fourteen, calls for making suitable public property available for affordable housing. At each of our meetings, we have inquired of the housing coordinator and often of the town planner as well, and the status of the process for identifying suitable parcels. We're impressed with the care and thoroughness that the town planner and the housing coordinator took in bringing forward the first group of parcels, and we acknowledge the important effort that the Falmouth Housing Trust did in bringing forth the two petition articles. The support provided by the Town Manager's Office and this Select Board in moving the process forward was much appreciated. And the approval of Town Meeting last fall was a welcome statement of the support for this important effort. Now is the time for the Select Board to move this process forward, as I hope you will do this evening, and we can learn from what the bidders think would be feasible on the four lots. We're confident that the excellent work done so far by Jed Cornack, his staff, and Kim Fish on this project, and that they will continue to do a good job as they work their way through the responses to the RFPs that will come and will bring us closer to having more affordable housing in our town. Thank you very much for your encouragement and support. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else, Jed or Kim, any final comments?
One.
Oh, sorry, sir. Yes, again.
Eric, I know it's Two Forty-three Westfell Highway. I was wondering, like, under forty B, often they allow, like, a fair number of market-rate units? What's kind of the plan around that? Like, are you accepting proposals that have market-rate units as well as the deed-restricted? Or is the deed restriction going to prevent those sort of things?
That will be up to the Select Board if they want to incorporate any market rate, but right now, the proposal is all deed-restricted units as affordable.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else know? Anyone on the board? Mr. Brown?
I'd be interested to know if any of those constructive comments could be implemented, if you feel like it's still some flexibility in your planning?
Absolutely. I think that's the purpose of this and the forum that we're going to have on, in July twenty-third.
Correct. So, yeah, just be on the lookout. We'll be blasting out the announcement for the public forum on July twenty-third.
All right. Well, we're not being asked for any decisions, so we will move on to the next matter, and thank you, Kim and Jed.
Thank you.
The next matter is a project eligibility site approval letter from the Select Board to Mass Housing for the property at Zero Sandwich Road. Mr. Renshaw, would you like to tee us up there?
I think I'm going to turn this right over to Kim. I think Kim's going to lead us in the discussion.
Yeah, it's kind of the Kim Show right now. Sorry about that. So, for the record, again, I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator. And the Select Board in the past has been asked to sign these letters, but we thought that it might be good to really explain why, and why they come before you. So, developers, they need to go through a subsidizing agency prior going to, before the Zoning Board of Appeals for affordable housing. They either will go to the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities or Mass Housing. This, the developer regarding this letter, it went before Mass Housing. So he files, they file an application, and Mass Housing goes through the application. And part of the process is the town sending a project eligibility site approval letter to Mass Housing, if you choose to. You don't have to, it's not a requirement. But I just want to be clear, the name of the letter is very misleading. We are not, we are not asking the Select Board to endorse or promote the project. That's what Mass Housing calls the letter, project eligibility site approval. We're not asking you to give a site approval. So, the title of the letter is a bit misleading. We're not promoting or endorsing the project. What we are doing, we're asking you to do, is sending the town's comment to put it in the record for the developer's application to Mass Housing. Mass Housing will then send out, they'll take everything into consideration, what the town comments are and what their feeling is upon the application, take everything into consideration, and they'll issue a project eligibility or not. And then the developer takes that project eligibility to the next stop in the process is to the Zoning Board of Appeals to file their comprehensive permit. Regarding this letter, the developer first met with myself- Regarding this letter, the developer first met with myself, the town planner, Assistant Town Planner, and the zoning administrator. Then, the developer went to the Land Use Group. Then there was a site visit with the developer, town officials, and Mass Housing. The information that was gathered at all these meetings have been incorporated into this letter that is before you tonight. So, that's the process, and that's what the letter is in that process. If you'd like, I can hit some of the highlights in the letter, or any questions. How would you like to handle it? I just wanna respect your time.
I'll start, and, you know, I appreciate the, the time and effort with respect to drafting the letter. I'm not comfortable with moving forward with the letter tonight, to be honest with you. You know, the, the letter takes a rather dim view of this particular application, possibly justifiable. But as far as going on record tonight, with respect to the points that you've made very well, I would prefer to, you know, consider it a little bit further, you know, maybe have some more discussion about some of the points. I mean, certainly, we need housing for older, older people, and you raise a number of good points with respect to why this doesn't fit within the town. So, I'm not saying that I don't think we should, you know, have such a letter. I'm just a little uncomfortable with proceeding tonight with that letter.
Sure.
In my view.
May I ask, when you do decide tonight how you vote, how the vote goes, we do just need to request an extension. We have a deadline of July 14th to get the, this letter into Mass Housing. So we'll just need to know when...
Is it difficult to get an extension?
No, but it does affect the developer's timeline, but Mass Housing will grant us an extension.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, how they feel with it? Mr. Brown?
I think the letter identifies a lot of concerns that, you know, it's not in line with our housing production plan, and I'm wondering what the, what the reason would be for delaying it. I, I thought it was a pretty good letter.
Okay. I've stated why I think I would prefer to take another look at it and digest some of the points that, that the letter makes with respect to the application. Mr. Richardson?
I don't have anything yet, I'm thinking.
Well, I mean, that's the point. I mean, I think it's a very strong letter, and it's one that I think we need a little more time to digest, that's all I'm thinking. Mr. Glasgow?
Ms. Fish, you said at the outset that sending this letter is not a requirement.
Correct.
What are the ramifications for the developer if we don't send a letter at all, or if we send a letter that is clearly not hardly in support of the project?
Well, the ramifications of us not sending a letter, there isn't any, really, unless we're going to 100% support the project. Where there is a safety issue with this one, with the sightline, I think it's imperative that we send a letter, because it's a safety issue for our community in that area, and it's a heavily traversed road. So I think it's very important we get this letter in and on record, because that is extremely impactful for Mass Housing. Mass Housing, I'll be frank, does not probably mind the rest of the comments in here, because they want housing. But when it's a safety issue, it piques their curiosity and attention, and this is absolutely a safety issue. When you're pulling out the sightline, you don't have enough time to look the other way too, so they need, we would like that to be addressed if the developer moves forward with this project, and we feel very strongly that needs to be on record.
Anyone else on the board? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak pro?
I just wanna thank...
Yeah, Jack, now that you had a chance to...
Vice Chair Goldstone for saying what I was gonna say. Like, I was trying to think of a way of, like, would this be too damning, or, or, like, what is Mass Housing's thinking on it? But I, I share the sentiment from, from, from the vice chair.
Okay. Well, I guess we would be looking for a motion to approve the letter at this time, as drafted. There's a motion?
I would make a motion, but I was just curious of, would there be an edit or two that you would want to suggest, since it is sort of timely?
I think it's a little bit more than just some edits. I mean, honestly, I just think there's a lot in that letter. If someone wants to come into our town and provide much-needed housing for a population that this town needs, and I just think that developer deserves our looking at this, you know, maybe a little bit deeper than we are with, you know, a letter that was very well drafted and just presented to us tonight. There's no need to proceed. If anything, we might, you know, delay the developer a little bit. We can get an extension, and that's all I'm asking for, though. There may not be any edits, but there's a lot of information in there that I'm just not comfortable with proceeding.
I don't know that the extension is guaranteed, and then if we don't send the letter in time, then it means we don't care, right?
Can you speak to the extension?
Most likely, they'll give us the extension, but I can't guarantee it until we reach out.
Right. It's the developer that has to offer it, right?
Excuse me?
It's the developer that has to grant it, isn't it?
No, it's Mass Housing itself, but they had already given us, given us an extension once.
Oh. So it's less likely.
How long was that original extension?
Do you recall, Jed? Two weeks? Which that was an easy give for them, because they had the site, the, the, we took a look at the site, and then they, they expected us to get it in two weeks, but we need to come before the Select Board. So that was an easy give, that extension.
I'd be reluctant to gamble on another extension.
And as I recall, a lot of the issues that are addressed, oh, mic just got louder. A lot of the issues that are addressed in this letter are things that came up in our first conversation about this development with this board, and that that's still the, the state of the application, I, I think, is, is an additional concern. I, I, I'm prepared to, to move approval of the letter as drafted.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No. Okay, passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to H. Discussing Consider the Application by Micro Pub LLC DBA, The Irish Goodbye Pint House, located at 444A.
Did we miss G?
Am I?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
The next chapter of the, of the Kim Show?
Trying to move this along here. Sit down, sit down, sit down. So we are considering the approval...
Mr. Chair is just sick of me up here, that's all.
Consider approval of an application of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, Shared Regional Housing Services. Ms. Fish?
For the record, I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator. In 2023, Barnstable County launched a two-year program providing shared regional housing services. For short, I'm gonna call it S-R-H-S. Free of charge to the Cape's 15 towns. The Department of Human Services and Barrett Planning Group have collaborated to develop regional resources, provide technical assistance to towns, and plan next steps for the program. The ARPA funding, which was used to fund the program, will end today, actually. So I'm a member, thank you for reappointing me for a second term, of the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council, and I have been working on this with the town of Barnstable along with the other members of the home consortium. And I'm also the town's point person for the Shared Regional Housing Services. So I've been participating in a virtual office hours that they have every other Tuesday, and the office hours allow the communities on the Cape to bring their housing questions to the project team. These discussions have created a constant opportunity for the town staff from across the region to share their experiences and insight with each other, which is imperative. There's not a lot of support for housing coordinators or anyone that works on housing. There's not a lot of places to go for information. We network, but, and especially with our, with what we have here on the Cape is very unique. So I have found this resource amazing, and it has broadened my network as well. Also, the Shared Regional Housing Services has developed regional resources, which include a summary of municipal housing trusts across Cape Cod, an analysis of Cape Preservation Act Housing Fund allocation by town, short-term rental reports by submarket, and continued work developing a data of deed-restricted affordable housing within the region. That means I can access deed-restricted house units through this, through this database and actually click the link that brings me to the deed restriction itself at the registry. It's an amazing resource, 'cause I can't tell you how much time I spent when I originally became housing coordinator to update the subsidized housing inventory. First, I had to find, I had to update the actual list of all the affordable housing in the town, and then see what was missing from the subsidized housing inventory. It was a lot of work, and this is going to be, you can just pull it up and it's right there. So also part of the pilot program, each community on the Cape was allotted the 30 free hours of technical assistance, and Falmouth has been using hours with drafting of the RFPs for the town-owned land to be disposed of for affordable housing, as approved by November 2024 town meeting. And I just wanna put a little caveat here, 'cause I feel necessary. There was a delay in getting them, but I feel that so strongly that we had such a wonderful resource of a highly-valued consultant that does this work, and now we have RFPs, 'cause we have not done it, and we, and if we did it in-house, most likely, it would have taken longer, where we don't have the experience doing it. Now we have a model for RFPs moving forward indefinitely. So there was a delay, but I feel it was worth it, because now we have this model moving forward. So while the ARPA funding for this program will end today, discussions are underway to determine options for the communities who wish to continue receiving regional housing services. They've created a tiered approach for municipalities to quote-unquote "buy-in for services." So I, in the packet, I had attached their proposals for your review, but I have a summary of each tier. So Tier 1 is a base fee only, $4,590. That's the regional activities only, so it's just the bi-weekly office hours, quarterly research, additional guidance, documents, and quarterly progress. It's things that affect us as a region, not individually as the town of Falmouth. Tier 2 is the base fee plus suggested minimum, minimum add-ons, which is $8,480. That's the regional activities. The, there'll be local support, but no more than 12 hours for miscellaneous support. I can call up and ask questions, but only up to 12 hours, and monitoring, but not to, monitoring for affordable housing, but not to exceed 15 hours, which is not a lot for what Falmouth's needs are. Tier 3, and the one that I am suggesting, is the base fee plus local support plus town-specific monitoring recommendations, $26,740. It includes the regional activities, local support, no more than 12 hours. But this is the one that really is most important to me as housing coordinator, is the specific monitoring recommendations not to exceed 140 hours. This is based on the complexity of Falmouth SHI. The, we have over 1,500 deed-restricted affordable units. Only a small portion of them right now are filing their annual, their monitoring reports annually. There's a significant amount, the majority of that 1,500 are not, which means we don't know if they're doing the right thing, and one of my goals when I became housing coordinator was to create this program to start this monitoring process. It was unrealistic goal for myself. Once I started digging in, it's impossible for me to do by myself. I need support for that. So I'm asking for the town to, for the Select Board tonight to approve this, so that we can get the support through the Shared Regional Housing Services to create, they're gonna do the research and figure out who's supposed to be monitoring. Some of them are lip, are, were done through lip, in the way we, lips were before. The town's supposed to monitor them. I don't even know which ones are specifically, 'cause it's not just easy to find out if it was, if the housing was developed through a lip. And also, they're gonna find, help me, and for the other ones that aren't, that the town isn't required to, they'll assist me in finding out who is supposed to. And then we'll be able to move forward drafting a letter and requesting those to start doing the annual monitoring. Then I thought when the year, when we're coming up to that year, we can reevaluate and see where we're at. Is this something with the town-owned one that we can do ourself? Are we gonna be able to do this monitoring ourself? Do, are we going to have to buy into the program again? I'm not sure. But I'd like to get to that point where we know what we're even talking about as far as the 15, over 1,500 units. We just heard tonight that we don't have a lot of land to build affordable housing anymore, and there's, we're still in a housing crisis, so I'd really like to protect what we already have, and I feel like just shy of $30,000 is worth that investment to protect what we already have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Kim, I just have a question about, what is the actual entity? When you said the county started it, but it's like a, is it a private consulting firm that's doing the work?
It is. It's Barrett Planning.
Okay.
Barrett Planning Group.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to, if I have it here. I'm not prepared to make a motion.
It's page 379.
379. See, I'm on, it might just be me, 'cause I'm on page 379. I make a motion as the Select Board acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to approve the application for $26,740 in funding for the Shared Regional Housing Services as presented. That was just totally my fault.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you. Kim, now you can go on.
Thank you very much, and this is gonna help me reach my final goal as housing coordinator when I was first hired. Thank you.
Just, just to real quick go after Doug's point he just made. Like, maybe like, just underneath, like, Town Manager's comments, like, the recommended, 'cause that's basically what the motion is, right?
It's, it's softened times to do quickly.
Yeah.
We've gotten it out.
Yeah, no, you're...
Same motion to approve, motion to, we can work on the format.
Okay, cool.
We're a little boxed in as far as where it appears on the agenda report, but we can work on it.
Gotcha.
Member Goldstone has suggested, it's a late night, Mr. Kornack has been here for a while, that we take out of order and deal with item K, which is consider a vote to approve, and is anyone okay with that as far as it goes?
Oh, sure, Carrie, give way.
I would say.
All right, well, we'll have some discussion on the country club. So, consider a vote to affirm the appointment of Jed Kornack as Director of Community Development and to waive the residency requirement. Is there a motion?
No.
Jed Kornack as Community Development Director.
We'll save it.
Second.
I don't think we have any questions.
Oh, well, Mr. Shaker, I just...
Yes, please, Mr. Renshaw.
So, real quick, let me know.
Oh, I didn't wanna take your, your thunder away from you.
I appreciate you moving this around, but this is, this is huge for, for the, for the town. So, just wanna, and I'll keep it really brief. Jed's got a tremendous amount of experience in, in, in local planning. He's been an asset in the two years that I've been here. I lean on him, rely on him. He's an expert in his field. I could go on and on about his qualifications, but bottom line is my opinion, and I think Peter, I can't speak for Peter, but I think he shares this, his leadership and management capabilities really impressed me over the past couple of years. So with all of that, and again, I was gonna keep it brief, it's my recommendation that the board affirm the appointment of Jed Kornack as the town's first ever, and hopefully lasts for a long, long time, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw.
And waive the residency requirement.
And waive the residency requirement. So is that the motion on the table right now? And there's a second? Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just say, I think this is a great move for our town, both in terms of creating this position, and also the person who's gonna be filling it, so really excited.
Okay. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you very much. Good luck, Ted. Go home. Thank you. Okay, we'll jump back, we'll check back to number H. Discussing Consider the Application by Micro Pubs LLC. by Micro Pubs LLC, DBA The Irish Goodbye Pint House located at 444A North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth for a change of manager. Mr. Clower?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Jed, before you leave, I was happy when Jed got the position as town planner. I'm thrilled with him accepting this position as Director of Community Development. What he's done with the planning office and the accessibility he has and I would, I would go as far to say his user friendliness that he has is, is really a testament to, to his character and his role in that position. And I think it's a wonderful move for the town.
Thank you.
I would say that even if I didn't have to go ask him for favors.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Probably. I'll bring baked goods.
All right, thank you. Okay, proceed.
Mr. Chair, for the record, Kevin Clower, I'm before you tonight representing Micro Pubs LLC, DBA The Irish Goodbye Pint House. I'm joined tonight by Tony Etree, who is the proposed manager for the liquor license. The former manager has moved on to a new position. Mr. Etree has almost 30 years of experience in hospitality in restaurants, most recently at the Mar Side Restaurant in Dennis. He holds an alcohol intervention method certificate, which is an equivalent of tips, which we typically see. He'll be at the restaurant, you know, 40-plus hours a week. I think, I think if he only had 40-plus hours, that would be a good week. You know, I think this is a relatively straightforward request. That said, I'm happy to address any questions you might have or defer any questions to Mr. Etree as need be.
Does any of the members of the board have any questions of Mr. Clower or the manager? No, I said, any questions of Mr. Clower or the manager?
I was going to say, the only question I was going to say was how much time do you think you'll spend? And Mr. Clower already proposed it would be 40 hours, so.
At, at, at a bare minimum, I would suggest. You know, I think most restaurant managers, especially during the summer months, are running closer to 50 or 60, 70 hours.
Two last week.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
A lot.
Yes, well, thank you for your patience. It's been a long night. Anyone prepare to make an applic, a motion?
Chair, I would move approval. Is there a specific motion?
Motion to approve the application by Micro Pubs LLC, DBA The Irish Goodbye Pint House for a change of manager for its all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, all right, Mr. Johnson Staub, you're up.
All ready?
Yes, how time flies.
Thank you. So I will try to make this concise. It is an important topic and one that several members of the board are very familiar with. And, you know, recognizing we have two new members, one of whom is here tonight, and also for the sake of the public, just start very quickly at the beginning so that the town has been leasing the Falmouth Country Club Golf Course since it was acquired. And recently, 2014, a request for proposals was issued and a lease was entered with Billy Casper Golf. That was a five-year lease with a five-year extension, expired December 2024. We then issued a request for proposals to seek a successor private operator and that proposal did not result in any, any responses. So I'm going to overview what our goals are for this lease and what the, a, a, a quick overview, the highlights of the lease, of the request for proposal terms, the lessons that we learned from the unsuccessful solicitation last year and then next steps. Tonight, the, the purpose is, again, for, you know, a brief presentation and then a discussion input from the board on some of the key terms for the request for proposals so that we can come back in July with a, with an RFP draft for your consideration and approval. So no vote sought tonight. So policy goals for leasing the golf course. It's pretty simple, although in application, it's not as simple as it seems perhaps, to select a quality firm able to effectively manage all aspects of the golf business. And what we mean by that is it's in the town's interest for the private operator to be successful for a number of reasons. You know, first of all, what's a success mean? It means, you know, maintenance has to be good because you need to be able to continue to attract customers. It also means that marketing needs to be good because the private operator needs to generate revenue so that they can cover their own costs, make some profit, and meet the town's terms in terms of the lease payments and the rent. Secondarily, you know, or more specifically in terms of the financial issues for the town, there is still remaining debt on the acquisition of the course. That's about $620,000 per year for 10 years. So that's a priority for the town to recover that revenue so that we're not using tax dollars to pay for the debt to acquire the property. And then over and above that, we really need to begin investing in capital improvements for the course. And so that revenue needs to come out of, or that, those funds need to come out of golf course revenue. So we really need the private operator to be successful in all facets of the business. So again, just very quickly overviewing the terms of the request for proposals in order to make sure that we select a private operator that is fully qualified, we have minimum requirements. I've highlighted them here. Experience is obviously really crucial. We're looking at a minimum for an operator that has five years of experience operating at least two 18-hole courses. We also require that they have experience with a computerized point-of-sale, marketing experience and expertise, including the use of analytics, and experience managing capital projects. Those are the minimum criterias. The selection criteria, we had 11. Actually, I've consolidated some. I think there were 13 separate selection criteria or thereabouts in the 2024 request for proposals. I've enumerated them here. I won't, I won't read them all. Again, the, you know, the experience of the firm, the experience of the staff, the, the references of the operator with their current and prior clients and credit rating of the firm are among the criteria that we look at for selection. But we never even got to that point with the, with the previous RFP because we didn't get any proposals. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go through the, the financial provisions, the key provisions of the RFP that, that, as I said, did not result in any proposals being received. So I have a table here that compares the lease that expired in 2024, the terms in that first column. The next column shows the terms that we had in the RFP that was issued last year. And then the final column on the right, we entered a one-year extension with the current operator, Trune Golf, and so we're showing what the terms are there. And, you know, really the, the, the key input that I'm looking for from the board ideally tonight is the length of the lease. With the last request for proposals, for reasons that, that we've discussed, we were looking for a, a longer-term lease, a 25-year lease with a five-year renewal. And had that been successful, it would have been, it would have been terrific in that we would have been able to fully delegate some of the capital improvements to the private operator, both with respect to financing them and oversight of those improvements. And that has some cost savings benefits and certainly time-saving benefits on, on the part of the town. As we've discussed, you know, that, that proposal did not generate any responses. I don't think it was exclusively because of the length of the lease. In fact, the feedback that we got, the length of the lease was not in and of itself the problem. The problem was the financial provisions. So we attempted to thread the needle, which is to say, to set the financial terms high enough that the town was assured we were going to get a good return on our investment. And we attempted to craft them in such a way that the private operator could still make a profit. Apparently, we, we were off in our, in the terms and, and we did not get any proposals. So the base rent that we had on the expired lease was $400,000, flat base rent with no escalator. The RFP we issued last year was 400,000, kept that the same, but we did add an escalator of capped at 2% and it would actually be zero if there were no revenue growth. Property taxes, the, there's been a, an evolving understanding of the application of real estate taxes in a leased situation and we now understand that full property taxes are required in a leased situation. So that, that is included here and that is an increase in revenue that the town will be receiving under this, under the next lease as compared to the expired one. Moving on to some of the other financial provisions, the revenue share threshold, so that the, the prior lease and the one that we were looking at for last year's RFP set a revenue share above a certain threshold. So for the expired lease, it was revenue above $1,420,000. 50% of the revenue received above that threshold would be paid to the town. In the RFP we issued last year, we increased the threshold to $1,750,000 and added an escalator to it, but reduced the revenue share percent. And then lastly, with respect to capital, there was a very minor contribution included in the 2024, in the lease that expired in 2024, which was $145,000 from the private operator. The town actually committed to 1.3 million in capital improvements for that lease term. What we looked at for, for the last RFP was a private operator minimum contribution over the 25-year period of $2 million with the town investing $965,000. So again, with the one-year extension, so that's, you know, one sort of a snapshot in terms of what the current private operator's appetite is for financial contribution. They agreed to a, I have it on the previous slide, the, the base rent is, oh, that's actually, sorry about that, that's not accurate. The base rent was, is 400,000 in, in the current 2025 lease extension. There is a revenue threshold, there are actually two revenue thresholds. The first is at $2 million and there's a 35% revenue share at $2 million and then at $2.5 million a 50% revenue share. And there is no capital contribution for this, for this one-year lease. So that's a, you know, a, again, a snapshot, an indication of what the private operator's appetite is for financial contributions. So I, I think I've pretty much said it. The, the lessons learned from this last RFP, our financial terms were too restrictive. So we either have to reduce our financial, minimum financial requirements or make the financial requirements more flexible in terms of the, what the respondents to the RFP are allowed to propose. I do think that the, one of the challenges with the structure of the last RFP is because it's a longer-term lease, it, it's, there's more risk for both parties with, with the longer term, more unknowns in terms of, you know, are revenues going to grow? Are they going to grow steadily? Are they going to grow substantially? Are revenues going to decrease? That, that has happened in the golf business over the last 30 years. The revenues have actually gone up and down. They can, they can go down and plateau and stay down. So there is, and then that combined with inflation and the private operator's costs going up, again, it becomes very difficult to predict with certainty a formula that's going to work for both parties. So we had a couple of conversations with the Golf Advisory Committee about these terms and they're, after quite a bit of discussion, there was a committee vote, a Golf Advisory Committee vote to recommend that we reduce the length of the term to 10 years with a 10-year renewal. And I've outlined here, and, and these are not your only two options, but just broad outline of a couple of different ways that you could approach the next RFP. So one option would be to stay with the 25-year term, possibly a five-year renewal option, and to make the financial terms less restrictive so that we are, we have a much higher likelihood that it will be an attractive financial opportunity for the high-quality private operators. And with that longer term, again, we would hope to have a, a private operator capital contribution. But again, the mix of the financial contributions would need to clearly be more flexible. Another option, and again, this is more the direction that the Golf Advisory Committee was recommending, is to reduce the term to 10 years with a 10-year renewal option. Again, we still need to make the financial terms less restrictive. In that shorter term, we would not be able to require a substantial capital contribution from the, the private operator because they're not going to, they're not going to get a return on that investment. You know, most of the, most of the capital improvements are going to have a useful life of greater than 10 years and they're not going to have a guarantee of 10 years. So, so any contribution, capital contribution that they make is probably going to be pretty limited, perhaps just to, for example, the, the rolling stock, the, the maintenance equipment, but not investing in bunkers, cart trails, irrigation system replacement, et cetera. So that's pretty much it. The, the timeline, we are looking for Select Board approval of an RFP by the end of July so that we can issue the RFP in early August with proposals due back mid-September. And that would allow for us to execute a lease in November in time for a January 1 start date for the next lease. That concludes my remarks. Happy to entertain questions and discussion.
Well, I, I for one think the 10-year lease is the way to go. I've said that, you know, before the original go-around. That's about all I would like to say right now. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Richardson?
Just looking at what the current fees are for residents and they're, and they're reasonable. And, you know, a priority of, of mine is making, you know, Falmouth affordable, and this is, you know, golf perhaps the least affordable sports nowadays, but keeping things like this affordable is incredibly important to young people and to, to income restrict to everyone. I don't know if this type of thing exists in leases. Is there any way to somehow, you know, have an agreement where the, they cannot raise the rates by a certain amount per year? I don't know if that exists in anywhere, but I just want to make a priority of mine to keep the relatively low rates that are currently in place for people wanting golf.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that comment. That is a question that does often come up with municipal golf management and I, I'm, I'm wearing a suit to hide the scars that I have from my experience in Yarmouth managing golf and apologies for some board members who have heard this before, but it is very, it's, it's dangerous to limit the revenue opportunities of a private operator because A, you know, it can discourage quality operators from bidding, B, it limits their revenue opportunities and particularly again, when the, the private operator faces all of these unknowns about what are the future costs of, of operation going to be? What is the, what is the demand going to be? So, you know, it is, it's commonplace to have some form of a resident discount, which we do have worked into this RFP, but we, we really want to be careful about not going too far with that. And, you know, this, the scars that I have, where, where communities have gotten themselves in trouble is when they set fees low and the Select Board is setting those fees and the politics of that is very challenging. And then you have this legacy that becomes unsustainable and you end up with an operation that can't support its costs.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
I would say I like the idea of going to the 10-year lease. It reduces the, the fear of the unknown significantly and I wonder if we could consider 10-year lease with an opportunity to renew for five or 10 years? Maybe that could be more flexible also. Maybe they might want to have an exit strategy. I'm not opposed to the idea of the town investing more in the capital planning. It's, after all, it's our golf course. Expecting other people to invest in it, you know, is kind of not practical, I don't think. So I think, I think you're on the right track with the, the golf committee's recommendation. So I think, I think you're on the right track with the Golf Committee's recommendations.
Mr. Haltman?
I would agree, and Mr. Muscala, you and I had conversations going back almost a year around best practices regarding lease lengths, and understand why we were going a different direction at that point, but I think the 10-year feels much more comfortable. Agree with Mr. Richardson that keeping a residential discount in there is an important policy piece to this, but also very much agree that this board should be at the policy level for the town and not deep in the grass or turf or whatever you call it on a golf.
Weeds, rough.
Rough, there you go. This is not my sport. And I guess just a couple of clarifying questions. So when you're talking about the revenue sharing, that is revenue, not profit?
Correct, right.
Okay. In terms of the capital investment, is your thinking and the Golf Committee's thinking at this point that that is, those costs are entirely borne by the town under this, this version moving forward?
So my goal would certainly be, you know, I look at all of the town's capital needs, which are pretty daunting, and the, you know, in terms of setting priorities, it's hard to put investment of tax dollars in the golf course, you know, above the bottom quartile of those, of those priorities. So my goal, and it's not, you know, it's not all in our control, because it depends a lot on the golf economy. The goal would be for the golf revenues to pay for golf capital improvements, even if the town's in charge of them. We do have a surplus of, or I shouldn't say surplus, we have a million, over, about $1,200,000, $1,200,000, $1,200,000, $3,000,000, in a special revenue account that is golf revenue that has been received, that's available to use to pay debt if the future lease doesn't cover it, or to pay for capital improvements. That's not going to cover the capital improvement requirements, but the hope would be if the golf economy continues on the trend that started with COVID, then we should be generating a surplus that can pay for pretty significant capital improvements.
Just two comments, one to Mr. Richardson. The current operator does, is very generous with respect to youth programs and Falmouth High School and so forth, and they've been very good in that regard, and we expect that that will always be a situation.
Yeah, I was, I was looking on the, what I've been scrolling through on the website. I just want to make sure that that is still the, you know, to the degree we can make that a written case, you know, I'd just like that.
And the only other thing I'm saying is, it seems like the Cape Cod Country Club solar expansion is going forward, and I think we need to take into account or consider that there may very well, within the next couple of years, be a real influx of rounds at Falmouth Country Club as the Cape Cod Country Club may close, so, yes.
Just one last thing, and Mr. Johnson stopped, you mentioned this. I do think that, both from a revenue perspective for the town and from a mission perspective, and you guys are going to start thinking I'm a broken record, but if our vision is to be the premier Cape Cod town, then this is part of that, right? And we need to actually be finding an operator for this course that's going to make it a destination, and really make it successful. And so figuring out what that, what that looks like in terms of flexibility, and I know we'd also kind of constrained that a little bit last time in hopes of making it easier to compare offers, and then we ended up with no offers. I guess I would say let's err on the side of more flexibility and do that work on the other side to evaluate what those different proposals might mean for us with the goal of really getting the best operator that we can, and understanding that this is a situation where their success means our successes as well.
Anyone else? Mr. Murphy, would you like to say something?
Hi, Terry Murphy, I'm the chairman of the Golf Advisory Committee. I'm not confused, I lost the, I lost that vote at the meeting with about the 25 or 30 year to go to 10-10. So at the end of 10 years, Peter, it's an automatic extension, or it doesn't go back out as an RFP, right?
No, so that would be a mutual option. So the town could decide to go out to bid again, the town...
So the town could opt out, right?
The town could opt out, and the private operator could opt out. You'd have to have both parties agreeing to extend.
All right, because the foundational part of this is the years. I mean, it creates a mutual, an atmosphere of mutual investment. You're not going to, you're not going to rent a place and put a roof on it, and 10 years you're out of there, you know? So just for the record, this is probably the largest open space acquisition the town has ever made of open space. And we do, and the town does have a 14-acre parcel that's cut out for municipal use in the backside of that property, so it's been, it's been a huge home run. They actually, when you talk about the fact, it's, before COVID, they actually were losing money. Unfortunately, COVID was very good for golf, unfortunately, very good for golf. But they were actually, you know, they were losing money at that course. And we have, you know, the Trune Company that's in there now is probably the largest, most professional company we could find. So, you know, we're, right now, we're in a great position. But I wanted to come tonight and support Peter, and the committee, we'll meet again, and we'll, and we'll look at the, we had a robust discussion about the terms, and Bob Muscala was there, and the timing is a little accelerated now, which is not going to give us room, gives us flexibility and things. So I appreciate the board's, you know, consideration of what we're doing, you know, moving forward with it. We need to get it right this time. Thank you.
Agreed. So we have two more meetings coming up to meet your July, end of July deadline. So, anyone else? So you're looking for direction from us with respect to the 10-year lease?
Yeah, I think I've got it. You're, the board is saying yes on the 10-year lease, and let's err on the side of more flexibility for the financial terms.
All right. I don't think we need any formal action. I think you understand where we're headed, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, with that, I will update the draft, and I can have that ready for the 4G.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is discuss select board committee assignments. I have received from all of you your preferences with respect to board assignments. I hesitate to, you know, make Colin, you know, the layers on to every committee, no one, so. So I think what we'll do is...
That's what happens when you go to Venice.
I think what we'll do is, I'm going to try and work on a matrix, put everybody's preferences down, and circulate something at the next board meeting when Colin's here. So with that, we have the review and consider a vote to approve the minutes of meetings' public session, June 3, 2025, and June 16, 2025.
I noted one typo that David Eisenberg was quoted, but his name starts with an I-S-E-N rather than E-I-S-E-N.
Okay, good catch.
Something I had on that meeting.
Okay, okay, all right. Does anyone want to make a motion with respect to minutes?
Just that one.
With that edit?
Just that one, or do you want to do both meetings? I found another thing.
Yeah, no, let us have.
Well, in the second minutes, I was quoted as saying I'd like to send a letter about the ICE activities, but what I was saying was that, I was mentioning that there was a letter sent by the county administrator protesting the sanctuary designation. So that's my only edit for that.
Do you want to, you want to hold off on approving it and make sure Diane has the proper terminology for what it was you wanted to say? We certainly don't need to approve them tonight.
I'm fine with it, it's just that it was in reference to the county administrator's letter. It wasn't a letter that I was proposing.
All right. That being said, motions?
Motion to approve with those edits.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
I...
All right, thank you. Mr. Renshaw, supplemental report?
Quick update. Very pleased to announce hiring decision, recruitment completion. Mr. Eric Hammerland is our new associate town council. Eric is going to start tomorrow, actually. Attorney Hammerland owned and operated Hammerland Law Office, a busy general civil practice on Martha's Vineyard for 17 years. Most recently, Eric worked as labor counsel for the Commonwealth. Attorney Hammerland has been a trained mediator since 2005 and has served as an elected member of the Martha's Vineyard Commission, the Regional Planning Agency of Martha's Vineyard Island, and the Elizabeth Islands. Attorney Hammerland looks forward to returning to a specialized generalist. He really, he cracked up the interview panel, some of his slogans and sayings, but specialized generalist, I think, is one of my favorites. Most importantly, he's going to be a great team player and, I think, integrates well with the staff and with the select boards.
And with his experience, he's, he's well-versed in land use and planning, and certainly something that we need.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, select board reports. Mr. Richardson?
What day is it?
Don't feel compelled to say anything.
No, I actually, I don't really have anything. It was great to attend with Mr. Brown and you, Mr. Chair, the, another terrific opening of the conservation area, T-Ticket, right next to the public housing. I think that's, again, another great example. To steal from you, you know, the 300 Committee is almost at a time to rename to the 3,000 Committee, you know, by the time the next project's done, they'll be there. So just more projects like that is what we need. You know, don't have anything from a state house perspective necessarily. I think, you know, I like to, when I can, see how my day job applies. I think there are some good stuff in the governor's environmental bill that we should keep an eye on, that will drive down energy costs for people in regions like ours. So when I have more details on that, I'll make sure that...
The budget's moving forward, and it's great to be signed.
Yeah, I guess that is, that is something, I guess I can, is that yesterday, or actually today, the senator approved the full-year budget. So the Pecasset Mental Health Facility right up the road from us, which serves us, is fully funded, guaranteed. So the second Governor Haley strikes the pen, that will be set in stone. And, you know, shout-out as well, Representative Mokley did, was the highest grossing freshman in terms of money brought back to the district, so good work to Thomas. Given updates for our legislative delegation, I guess.
Mr. Brown?
Nothing big to report this week.
Okay, Ms. Haltman?
The beach committee, first of all, the last meeting was a terrific meeting with our new coastal resilience coordinator there, sharing new drone data on our beaches, and what these drone surveys can do and will be able to do for us moving forward, which was really terrific. And I think the whole beach committee, as well as staff at that meeting, very enthusiastic about our new coastal resilience coordinator, who is clearly very, very knowledgeable. So that's great news. Maybe less great news, the beach committee, and I've been hearing from the beach committee a lot, fielding some, some comments and some complaints about early season availability of beach stickers and how the, you know, with the new online system and availability of the bathhouse, and so just, I think, a lot to continue working out there with that system to ensure that we have beach stickers available, certainly by the time we have parking attendants at our, at our beaches.
Okay. Couple of weeks ago, I met with two members of the Eastern Falmouth Village Association, Terry Rogers, the current president, Tom Zine, and we floated the idea of some of the village associations, I mean, we've got 40 or 50 village associations, but the ones that are geographic, we floated the idea that, that they would maybe get together on a periodic basis, chat about issues that affect them all, you know, in general, and then specific issues that they face. I did attend a meeting last week. There were representatives from T-Ticket, West Falmouth, North Falmouth, through Mr. Zine speaking on behalf of the North Falmouth, Maravista, the Main Street, and Woods Hole. And it was a very productive meeting, and I think the group is looking forward to continuing to do this on a regular basis. They asked if I would ask whether we would be able to supply a speaker now and then to the group, and, you know, I said I would certainly pass it on. So that's my report. Future agenda items, one thing that I'm looking at is AI and how the town is dealing with AI or thinking about it going forward. Just, you know, throwing it out there, everybody's talking about it, we know, and, you know...
Have you enabled it on your phone?
What?
Have you enabled AI on your phone?
No.
I get it. When you, when you get a text, it says, are you going to be working at my house on Tuesday? And it suggests, no, I can't make it Tuesday, or, yeah, I'll see you Tuesday morning.
It's certainly scary, so, but I think that, you know, we need to start at least thinking about it going forward.
You're lucky, because I was reading the news, and there was an amendment in this big bill that's going through DC to prohibit municipalities from regulating AI, but it's been removed from the bill, so...
You're using AI.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the only one that I would just like to mention, I know I've texted you about this, was almost a single-issue candidate, but I do think, we were talking about big capital issues, and I would like, with some urgency, you know, to, in the previous board, Bob, you were on it, you were definitely on it, I'm not sure if you were, about the tax rate and looking at the seasonal resident...
That's in motion, I think. Mr. Renshaw is, right?
It's on the list for...
It's on the list for us to address.
Yeah, I just, I, that's the one I'll, I appreciate it, but that's my big one, so, thank you.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, we are, you know, 45 minutes late, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Yeah, the motion in a second. Nancy used to always turn to me for the motion to adjourn, so, motion in a second.
Old habits tie hard.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. A really good meeting. Thank you very much.